Okay, thank you, Brian, and welcome everyone to this November 6, 2023, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We've got a couple of check presentations tonight. First, we've got one for Red Mountain Park. I think we have Carly Sanford. Maybe?
Yeah, she's here. I see her.
She's here. Come on up.
No, I don't have a check. I don't have a check. Hey, Leah. Hi.
Do we have the check?
Beau, Melody, do we have a check for Red Mountain?
That was the check.
Oh, that was the check.
You have the check.
I thought that was my face stuff. Sorry. Mayor, I really did. I thought that was my face stuff. I'm so sorry. I hope the TV cameras got that. I thought that was my face stuff.
Thank you, councilors. We really appreciate you all. Last year when we were here, we told you all that if Homewood would contribute and all the municipalities would contribute, it would pull together this bigger effort of uniting all the larger acreage green spaces in Jefferson County. And we have done that. Thanks to Jennifer Andrus and her leadership and other leadership, we've raised over $5 million to support this effort for a three-year stint. And so your contribution is helpful. I know that many Homewood residents use this space to breathe, explore, and connect. And so we're just really excited for the future and excited for what's happening. So next, if y'all want to contribute to restrooms at Red Mountain Park, let me know. But thank you all so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Hey, Carly. Carly, I was wondering if you could give everybody a brief overview of the Jefferson County Greenway Commission because it really is this brand-new.
It is.
And it's revolutionary, I think, in my opinion.
Thank you. So we've raised the funds for this three-year runway, and we are in the process, and we are in the middle of it, of creating something that has never existed in our county before, essentially a Parks and Rec Department that provides funding, maintenance, operation, support for all of our large acreage green spaces. And we have three major ones: Turkey Creek Nature Preserve, Ruffner Mountain, and Red Mountain Park. And these all fall in a confluence of different cities. It's Homewood, Hoover, Birmingham, Bessemer, when it comes to Red Mountain. And you look at Ruffner, you have Irondale, Trussville, Birmingham. And who is at the table funding? And then also the efficiency of scale, having one park superintendent. We don't all need a bobcat or an excavator. So streamlining maintenance and creating a system that will provide the opportunity for one place to go, for opening up future green spaces and maintaining the ones that we currently have. It has been a road we've been on for about five years to get to the place we are now. We've recently posted the park superintendent job description for the Jefferson County Greenways Commission. We will be interviewing, and Jennifer will be a part of that committee at the first of the year, hopefully. And we're really excited for this opportunity to maintain and secure what we have and then create a mechanism for future land acquisition because our residents of this county and outside love being outdoors and providing that for them. Did I cover it?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next, I think we're getting a check, or we may have already gotten the check. We've already gotten the check. But David Faulkner, our House Representative there is David, come on up and, if you will, tell us what you gave us the check for.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I delivered. It was going to expire on us if I didn't get it over here, so got it over to the mayor a few weeks ago. And it was a check for $5,000 to kind of begin the pickleball discussion for the Homewood community, fast-growing sport, and kids and adults, young and old, men and women are loving playing pickleball. And so it's a great activity. And I'm just wanted to, I've been giving money to other communities that I represent regarding pickleball. And I said, all right, I'm going to go ahead and stick $5,000 in here for Homewood and get the conversation started and would love to see where you and the council members and the mayor and your Parks Department, where y'all think would be a great place to start that pickleball going in Homewood. Also, just love to get out and see the communities I represent and say hello to you guys and see if there's anything that you want me to address. Certainly, a lot of issues. I know the LID bill has been something, Mr. President, we have tried to address before, and I stand ready and willing to do that again. I want to commend you, your council, your city government, for what you do for Homewood schools. I know that y'all probably already talked about how you were ranked the top elementary schools, I believe, in the state of Alabama recently. So the fact that y'all are the only council and city I know that takes 1% of its sales tax and puts it towards your school system is phenomenal. It shows a real commitment and devotion for the people of this community and its leaders, y'all. So I know that's not easy to do when your neighbors are out from under the LID bill. And so I stand always to believe that Homewood has that right and ready to help, Mr. President, in that anytime y'all want. The Homewood people should have that right. To be able to vote is all you're asking for, and you should have that right to do that. So thank y'all for letting me be here tonight. And please let me know if there's a project or something going on in the city that you need state help with, county help with. I'll do my best to reach into those tax dollars to help the people of Homewood.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the check and your support.
Thank y'all.
All right, and then we have one proclamation tonight. I'm turning it over to the mayor. This is recognizing Diwali.
Yes, and if I could have the representatives from the Hindu temple and everywhere else to come up here. I will say it's a little unfair that I could possibly butcher a lot of this, and I apologize ahead of time, especially with everybody here. But just want to read this out for you. Whereas the BAPS Swaminarian Temple and the Hindu Temple of the Culture Center of Birmingham, the Association of Indian Students of UAB, the Hindu American Foundation, and over 1 billion celebrants worldwide reverently observe the festival of Diwali, the festival of light symbolizing the victory of Dharma, good over evil. Whereas Diwali is one of the most celebrated festivals of great significance to Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, and Buddhists. And whereas Diwali falls on Sunday, November 12th this year in accordance with lunar calendar and brings together families, friends, and communities here in the U.S. and around the globe in goodwill, peace, and a shared sense of renewal. And whereas the U.S. Congress officially passed unanimous resolutions since 2007 recognizing the religious and historical significance of Diwali. And whereas celebrants renew their commitment to upholding values of truth, non-harming, and restraint through their thoughts, words, and actions. Whereas Diwali is a time for dana, charitable giving, and seva, selfless service, by bringing light in the form of wisdom, knowledge, nourishment, and shelter in order to alleviate the tangible forms of suffering such as hunger, disease, and poverty. Whereas the shared Indian holiday of Diwali signifies a special time of peace and serenity with the hope of building bridges and understanding and tearing down barriers of intolerance. And whereas Diwali is celebrated by many Hindus as a day of Thanksgiving for the homecoming of the Lord Rama and the beginning of the new year for many Hindus. And whereas Diwali is a festival of lights during which celebrants light deus, small oil lamps, place them around the home, and pray for knowledge, peace, and universal well-being. Whereas for Sikhs, Diwali is celebrated as, excuse me, as the day that the sixth founding of Sikh guru or Reverend Teacher Guru Hargobind was released from captivity. And whereas for Jains, Diwali marks the anniversary of the attainment of Moksha or liberation by Mahavira, the last of the Tirthankaras, the great teachers of Jain Dharma at the end of his life in 527 B.C. Whereas the Buddhist, especially newer Buddhists, Diwali is commemorated as the great Emperor Oksha embraced Buddhism as his faith. Now therefore I, Patrick McCloskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby recognize the religious and historical significance of Diwali, the festival of delight, the festival of lights, and Diwali's message of tolerance, compassion, and the victory of good over evil, which resonates with the American spirit and encourages all of those who celebrate the festival of Diwali on November 12th, 2023, and likewise encourage all citizens of Homewood, Alabama, to join in recognizing the contributions of all Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, and Buddhists active in all aspects of our vibrant economy and civic society. Well, I appreciate it. That's absolutely, absolutely.
These are the biggest celebrations of our culture, and it really signifies unity and diversity. So thank you so much.
No, thank you very much. And if you guys want to take a picture?
Sure.
Sure.
One, two, three.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, so with that, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order, and then I'm going to ask Parth Bhagat to come back up. I think. Did we lose it? Oh, is Ravi doing?
He can save it.
So he's going to, they're going to do the invocation for us, and that'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Namaste and jaisona. I will now recite millennia-old prayers from the Bhagavad Guru and the Yajuravid. Kusheban will provide the translation as I recite. Tva meva mata chapi ta tva meva.
Oh, Lord, you are my mother and my father.
Tva meva bandhu sja sakha tva meva.
My brother and my friend.
Tva meva vitya dravinam tva meva.
You are my knowledge and my only wealth.
Tva meva sarvam mama deva deva.
Oh, Lord of lords, you are everything to me.
Om diyo hu shanti ranta rikshakum shantihi.
Om, may the heavens, space, and the sky be peaceful.
Prithavi shanti rappa shantihi.
May the earth and waters be peaceful.
Rooshada yaha shanti vyanaspataya shantihi vishvadevaha shantihi.
May the herbs, plants, and trees be peaceful.
Brahma shanti sarvam shantihi.
May the forces of nature be peaceful.
Shanti reva shanti sama shanti redi.
May God bring us peace. May everyone be at peace.
Om shanti shanti shantihi.
Om, peace, peace, and peace.
Thank you very much. If everyone will please face the flag.
Let's raise the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again. We appreciate it. All right, Mr. Seacrest, if you will please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney.
Here.
Gear.
Here.
Halaman.
Wolverton.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Nels.
Here.
Andrus.
Here.
Harden.
Here.
President Wyatt.
Here.
All right. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of October 23rd, 2023. Those were previously distributed. I entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of said minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Nels, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor? Any opposed? Those are approved 10 to 0. Next, we have board vacancies. I don't think we had anything that closed, but we do have a, just as a reminder, Historic Preservation Commission for Ward Four that closes on the 27th. All right, there are no additions to the agenda tonight, which brings us to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for, well, I'm sorry, I've got to do the approval of the agenda. I'm skipping. I apologize. There are no additions to the agenda. I entertain a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion for Ms. Smith, second from Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 10 to 0. You got to ask me something?
I did have a quick question about the consent agenda. I know there was an item that the mayor was adding that I don't see on the, oh, a committee referral, sorry.
Okay.
Is it on there?
Yeah.
So I guess I did have a quick question just about that. It's on finance, but it seemed like it was a public works item.
I think it's, I think it go to either. I think the reason that it's going to finance is simply because it deals with the contract. So I think it's corresponding to the previous item.
Okay.
That we had on that contract.
And whether or not we're getting the services we were agreeing.
Correct, yes, as opposed to the services themselves.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, back to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Gualtney, second for Ms. Gear. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 10 to 0 as well, which brings us to the old business agenda. First item, 020823, bid opening held on October 30, 2023, at 4:31 p.m. for revised paving projects brought to us by Berkeley Squires, our Public Services Director. And we'll start with a report from finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met October 30th and voted 5 to 0 to recommend accepting the bid from Central Alabama Asphalt for $689,115. So 5 to 0 out of finance.
All right, so we have a motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved 10 to 0 and will be Resolution 23160. Next item, 010923, bid opening held on October 30, 2023, at 4:31 p.m. for as-needed drainage pipe rehab, brought to us by Kale Smith. And another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend accepting the bid as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Video Industrial Services. The unit price is $9,500. 5 to 0 out of finance.
All right, so we have another motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 10 to 0 and will be Resolution 23161. Next item, 130923, request to amend fiscal year 2223 budgets, brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. And another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the amendments. Just to note, we do have this item back in finance for additional items, but we did vote 5 to 0 for those items.
All right, so we have another motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As also approved 10 to 0 and will be Resolution 23162. Next item, 140923, request to consider changes to credit card purchasing policies, brought to us by Counselor Smith. And another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend amending the presented draft. We then voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the new credit card policy. And then last item is we voted 5 to 0 to recommend amending the meal reimbursement. So all that was made by 5 to 0 vote.
Okay, so we'll take those two items up separately with a resolution for each one. First, for the revisions to the credit card policy. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to 0 and will be Resolution 23163. Next, we will take up the modified reimbursement policy. Any questions or comments about that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 10 to 0 and will be Resolution 23164. Next item, 141023, request to set a bid date for Delkis Drive Sidewalk Phase Two, brought to us by Kale Smith. And a report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend setting the bid opening date for December the 11th. The submissions will be due at 4:30, and the bid opening will be at 4:31.
All right, so we will set that bid opening date for December 11th at 4:31. Next item, 191023, request for consideration for a one-time offer concerning retiree health insurance, brought to us by Mayor McCloskey. And another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right, so we have another motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 10 to 0 and will be Resolution, I'm sorry, 23165. Next item, 031023, bid opening set for November 6, 2023, at 4:31 p.m. for communication services, brought to us by Counselor Smith. And another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The bid opening was made today, so I would recommend sending this back to finance.
All right, so we will send that item back to finance for consideration of the bid. All right, next item, 070323, request for consideration of adjustments to criteria for approval of events impacting normal street flow and access, brought to us by Counselor Gualtney. And we will start with a report from Public Safety. Mr. Gualtney.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met October 30th and voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Nels.
All right, so we have a motion from Public Safety. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to 0 and will be Resolution 23166. Next item, 051023, public hearing set for November 27, 2023, at 6 p.m. for consideration of condemnation of the accessory structure at 2819 Crescent Avenue, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. We will carry that item over for the public hearing on November 27th at 6 p.m. Next item, 081023, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to rezone 1906 Courtney Drive from C1 to C2. The applicant is McConnell White and Terry Realty Insurance Company to facilitate the proposed redevelopment of the Homewood Piggly Wiggly Grocery Store. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of 8, 8 to 1. Is that right?
On the zoning, 8 to 1.
8 to 1. 8 to 1 favorable recommendation. And we will start with a report from Planning and Development. Ms. Andrus.
Yeah, I will make the report, even though I want to thank Counselor Gualtney for chairing for me. Last week I was ill, so I appreciated him covering for me. The committee heard from the following: Murray Legg, Vic Fortenberry, Ellen Witt, and Andy Versiglio. The committee then voted 4 to 0 to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Wolverton and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right, so with that, I will go ahead and open this public hearing and ask the applicant to come on up to the podium and start us off. There should be a sign-in sheet, hopefully.
Can we have patients here, so you can see if you can sign in and face the page?
And we'll, I'll get, Mr. Legg, I'll let you start in just a second. As people want to come up and speak tonight for any public hearing, if you will, just make sure you sign into the, sign in sheet when you get to the podium for me. All right, Mr. Legg, just start us off. Tell us what we're considering here.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Murray Legg, representing McConnell White and Terry. We're here to ask that you approve the rezoning and also the development plan that we have And just a brief history, we've been working on this project now for about a year, year and a half. And we have come together as a group and tried to address as many concerns of the neighbors' businesses as we can. We're not going to be able to solve all of them, but we tried very hard. And if you could put up on the board there the site plan, okay? As you can see, this little small square down here, that is the existing CVS. And the area behind the CVS is where the new Piggly Wiggly is proposed. And then, of course, you have Cameron's Corners to the north, and then on the corner at the O-Pig location, hopefully, that will be just some small shops. One of the biggest issues that we've had with this was where to locate the loading dock. And we have looked at every scenario that we possibly could. And we started on the north side, and we had issues there with the sewer easement. We tried the backside. It wasn't wide enough to have a loading dock and the trucks circling the building. And so that left us with the south side of the building. And we have tried very hard to come up with a way in which to shield the trucks from Courtney. The actual loading dock goes down at a grade, and so you will only see just a small glimpse of the truck from the roof. Plus, we have a wall. If someone could put up the wall, there it is, right there. So we have a 12-foot wall that we have built, and within that wall is a trash compactor that is loaded from the inside of the store. So you will not see any, like a dumpster out there with trash that you sometimes see now behind the Piggly Wiggly. And so that is a, you know, just a big point I wanted to point out is that the owner has gone at the expense of, you know, having this masonry wall right there to try to block as much of the truck as you possibly can. One of the other issues has been about safety and about the children that walk back and forth and go to Shayskahaba and come out. Andy has agreed to have someone out there at all times of deliveries to kind of, you know, a flagman, if you will, to help the trucks back in and back out and leave. And that is something Andy has agreed to. And he's also agreed to have someone there to help with the kids across the crosswalks that we will put there. But there'll be a sidewalk that runs down Courtney. It's there now, but we will improve that sidewalk, and then it will go down, all the way down, and it goes down to 31 and then all the way over in front of the Piggly Wiggly. But we have looked at the, you know, as I said, on the north side of the building. And with the sewer easement and also with the back of Cameron's Corners, the way that it comes down, it just creates too much of a problem for us, I mean, and for, you know, Andy and the Pig. The Pig has been a staple in Homewood for over 50 years. And, you know, I know when I grew up here in Homewood, that's where we shopped. And so I'm honored to be able to come here, present this on behalf of Charles Terry, McConnell White and Terry, and also Andy. And so we're just asking you for a nice, positive vote. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. And we have our engineer here, Andy is here, and his son Andrew is here, if you have any questions for us.
All right. I am thinking that there are other people out there that want to speak to this issue. If you do, I would say start coming on up, and then we can go through any, yeah, if you've got, anyone's got a question now.
Do we need chairs at the back? I see everybody standing. We have plenty of chairs in the back if you need one. We're happy to provide that. I just say for people.
Okay.
Well, we have a lot more, so thank you. I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, no, thank you.
President Wyatt?
Yeah.
Are we going to just go ahead and consider both the rezoning and the development plan at the same time?
No, we can't, even if we wanted to.
So we're just talking about a rezoning.
At this point, that's the issue, is the rezoning, and then we will, the development plan will be next. So to Ms. Gear's point, we're discussing the use at this point, and then we will discuss the development plan. Mr. Wolverton.
Can you remind me what's on the current site where the new Pig is proposed?
There's nothing there.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so with that, let me see if there's anyone else here to speak to the zoning use issue. And if there is, come on up.
I'm Slade Blackwell, uh, thirty, thirty, Thirty-Six Independence Drive. We have a building, uh, that's very close to this facility. Um, and I've got some handouts while she's trying to get that on the board. And I know you guys know this issue. I think the ma, big thing we want to talk about, uh, is the safety issue we have. So I passed around two, um, site maps, very similar to what you put up here earlier. And what we're proposing is to put the, uh, loading zone or loading dock on the opposite side. So if you see the first one, um...
Mr. Blackwell, let me, let me just interrupt you real quick.
Okay.
Just, just to make sure, I don't, I don't know where you're going with this, but is it, is this pertaining to the use of the property and the zoning, or is it more pertaining to the development plan that will be the next item?
It'd be the development plan.
Okay. And, and I don't have any problem with you speaking both times. I just want to, I want to try to do what we're supposed to do and consider what we're supposed to consider with each issue.
I can, I can hold back and come back when we're on that issue.
That's perfect. If, and, and I don't mean to cut you off if you have anything about the zoning.
No, I'm fine with the zoning. Actually, we're very in favor of the, the project. We just want to see a flip of the parking deck.
Okay.
Or parking, uh...
No problem.
And I'll come back.
No, thank you very much. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the zoning? If not, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council on the zoning issue.
I do have a question, just in general. Um, Mr. Legg, any update on the storage unit that's up against the CVS that you said would be gone by today?
I drove by there today on the way over here and it was still there.
Yeah.
And so, um, I will go by CVS tomorrow and ask if we can get the, you know, like the area manager on the phone. But, cause she has told me that she has placed a call and asked that group to come and, you know, and take it away, but they haven't come yet.
Any, I, I feel like, follow up on that? I mean, recourse? I mean, it's been, it's been enough time.
Well, I mean, I don't know, um...
It's sitting on our sidewalk.
So, yeah, I, so...
It's been there for years and years.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, this is what I'm hearing. The, the storage unit is CVS's.
Exactly.
And it shouldn't be there. Completely agree. I think that's something we, i, if, i, if, if the owner of the property is doing what you're supposed to do and telling CVS that it needs to go, and they're not getting a response, then we need to probably help as a city en, enforce our ordinances with regard to that. So I, I think that would be our enforcement issue to do next.
Okay, I will send that to Scott.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, Councilwoman Andrews, I've already started drafting an email to him, just let him know.
Okay.
We can bring CVS in front of public safety.
Copy me on that, if you would, please. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sims, did you have a question?
Yes, I had a question, just for clarification with Mr. Kendrick. Um, at the committee meeting, you referenced that there was a proffer made, is that...
That's in the development ordinance, it's the next item.
That's what I was thinking, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments from council? If not, Mr. Kendrick, would you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance to further regulate, excuse me, further amend the zoning ordinance and the zoning map of the City of Homewood, whereas the Planning Commission of the city has faithfully recommended that the city council approve the change in classification from the current zoning classification, C-one Office Building District, to the City of Homewood, C-two Neighborhood Shopping District, whereas the council has determined that the public hearing can be held on November sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and therefore be ordained by the city council as follows. That the following described property nineteen-oh-six Courtney Drive with a legal description attached as Exhibit A, being the same as hereby taken from its current zoning classification, C-one, and rezoned to the City of Homewood, C-two Neighborhood Shopping District rezoning. Section two, that from enactment, the enactment of this ordinance and approval by the mayor, as otherwise becoming law, uses and restrictions applicable to C-two Neighborhood Shopping District as set forth in the zoning ordinance shall be, shall be applicable to the property described herein. Section three, that November the sixth, at six o'clock P.M. is the time and place for the public hearing, at which time a public hearing will be held and the person who is interested may be appear and be heard. Section four, that the city clerk is given notice as required by law for this public hearing. Section five, any part of provision of the ordinance is declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of conduct jurisdiction and all other parts of provisions remain in full force and effect. Section six, ordinance become effective immediately upon passage by the city council approval by the mayors or otherwise becoming law.
All right, thank you very much. I would now entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrews, and a roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtin?
Yes, sir.
Gier?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that is ten to zero, and now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrews, second by Ms. Nelms, and another roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtin?
Yes, sir.
Gier?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that is ten to zero, and that will be ordinance twenty-eight-eighty. All right, which brings us to the next related item, uh, oh-nine-ten-twenty-three, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to approve a final development plan for thirty, thirty-thirty, Independence Drive, thirty-oh-eight Drake Street, nineteen-oh-nine Oxmore Road, and nineteen-oh-six Courtney Drive. Uh, the applicant is McConnell White and Terry, uh, for the proposed redevelopment of a three-point-two-one acre site centered around the planned construction of a new twenty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-fifty-square-foot Piggly Wiggly Grocery Store, a new six-thousand-square-foot retail building, as well as associated parking, landscaping, and other site developments. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of seven to two favorable recommendation. All right, and another report from planning and development, Ms. Andrews.
The committee voted four to zero last week to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Wolverton.
All right, so with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Mr. Legg, I know you've already told us...
A little bit.
A little bit, but, uh, tell us anything else that you need to tell us.
In our meetings that, um, you know, Ms. Andrews was talking about, um, we were asked different questions about, uh, about the truck patterns. Um, of course, about the location of the dock, about the safety for the children. Um, you know, one of the things that we have talked, talk, excuse me, talked to you guys about as well is when the truck comes down Drake and turns on the Courtney to back in to the, to the loading dock, we have run several trials on that with the, with the largest eighteen-wheeler that the Piggly Wiggly has, and it's taken about forty-five seconds to, to do that, to a minute. So, um, I think the worst-case scenario that you would be seeing now is the truck pulls on Courtney and backs into the loading dock. Um, now trucks are trying to also get out on thirty-one and go north. That's going to be stopped and, and all, all trucks have to turn right on thirty-one and go, sorry, I talk with my hands, and go, go down and, uh, you know, make a U-turn. Uh, we're going to have cross, crosswalks, as we talked about. Uh, we've thought about how it will look to the businesses across Courtney. That's why we put up the twelve-foot-high wall. So, we feel like we're doing everything that we can to try to accommodate as many concerns as they have. You know, unfortunately, we just can't solve all of them. Um, and, you know, wish we could, but, um, but that is, those are the main things that I think was causing some heartburn with, you know, with some of the business owners and some of the, some of the residents. Um, and, uh, if you would, but if you would put our site plan up there real quick.
Brian, there we go.
Okay, um, there's a, yeah, one more, um, like the aerial right there, yeah. As you can see, where, where Cook Street behind stops right there. And, you know, we thought about trying to put the loading dock back there. It just doesn't work. And then, of course, on the north side, well, not only does that interfere with the operations of the Piggly Wiggly having it on that side, it's also right there where, you know, where the Cameron's Corners is. And there is an actual cleaner's drive, drive-through that comes down and turns, and turns onto, um, onto Cook Street. And so, um, or, or it can, you know, turn and go out on, um, Drake Street. So, the safest and most effective place for this to be is on the south side. So, um, if you would show the wall one more time. And of course, that's, that's the wall that's facing Courtney. And if you could back up and show the back of the building, we've tried to make it a nice, you know, brick facade so, so you will, you know, you know, have a nice building that you're looking at from the rear.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Versiglio, would you, you're, I see, I see you looking. You, feel free to come on up.
So, Andy Versiglio, Piggly Wiggly. Um, our goal is to make this work for everybody. And I understand what everybody's concerns are, but our goal is to have no trucks on Courtney outside of an eighteen-wheeler pulling up to back into the dock. Like Murray said, we've ran multiple tests and it really can be done fairly easily with Drake Street the way it is right now. Take when, the new development, we're going to have another twelve to fourteen feet for that truck to work, which he doesn't have now. So we really feel confident that'll work. So with that timeframe being said, we feel like that minute or whatever for that truck to back up will be, we feel, we feel good about that. Secondly, we're going to try and really get all of our vendors to exit going back to Oxmore to the light. Um, we don't, we want to try and keep as many trucks exiting off of Courtney as we can, but if a truck, an eighteen-wheeler's going south, we're going to have, they have that option. But if they're going north, we're going to direct them to go towards the Oxmore Road and hit the light to go north. So, and, you know, our goal is to have no trucks on Courtney outside of those eighteen-whealers that have to back up and then possibly exit. The smaller trucks, we will keep in our loading area and stage, uh, on the other side of the parking lot. Um, the, 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 the question about the north side, I can say, we looked at it. We took a good look at it. And, but, once we saw what it would entail inside of our store, changing the back, back of the house, um, and what it entail would turn the front of the house, which is the integrity of our store, sales floor, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't work for us. So this is the best option for us. Um, and I, you know, our goal is to make it work for everybody. So I don't know if I have any, is, if there's any more questions?
Um, we may call you back up for some questions, uh, but I, I want to see if we can sort of make it through the speakers first. Welcome back.
Thank you. Were we able to get some of that information photographed and be able to put up here?
All right, great. This is, this is great. All right, so, um, I'm a real estate developer, played in politics for a minute, and, um, so I love development, I love site plans, love, uh, working with guys to figure out how to make a site work. So, this was our proposed idea for the, uh, loading zone. You can see outlined in blue is the truck. And the reason we like this proposal versus the other one, um, is because it keeps the, the traffic, the trucks inside the property itself and not on Courtney Drive, not on a public road. They can do all their U-turns back in and back right exactly where you see it on, on the north side. Would you flip to the, the next slide? This is their current, um, site plan, and you can see, uh, uh, outlined in blue in, in the red is where the truck's back in. To make that turn, you'll see, it's a terrible job I did with a magic marker, but that's where the trucks will, um, have to pull up and then back in eighty feet. And you see the green area? That is sixty feet of, um, a public sidewalk, and then also twenty feet of a crosswalk that they will have to back in every single day, uh, for deliveries. And I'm not sure how many deliveries we have, but probably fifteen a week. And one big thing you got to keep in mind is, there's a difference between Piggly Wiggly trucks and all the other trucks that deliver there. The Coke, the Boars Head, a whole host of trucks. So, I believe Andy, he's a great guy, love Piggly Wiggly, I bought steaks there tonight, but they're not going to be able to keep all those trucks backing in. If you would go back one last time to that site plan, and then all those X's are parking spots that are going to have to be removed, the cars to be removed, so a truck can make that turn, that radius, and come all the way around, if that makes sense. So if anybody's in that parking spot, they're going to have to ask them, ask them to move, then flag, and then have those trucks come and then back completely up. So my concern is completely a safety issue. Um, everything we've been told, there's no reason they can't, other than they don't, other than they don't want to put it on the north side of the property.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Blackwell a question?
Can, no, let's get through, let's get through the speakers first and then... All right. Dr. Witt, do you want to go next?
I'm going to hand out a few pictures. Mr. President, council members, mayor, appreciate you guys letting us speak tonight. My name is Ellen Witt, and I'm a chiropractor on Courtney Drive, and I'm about to start my twenty-seventh year there. I have had a front row view to Courtney Drive for twenty-seven years, twenty-six, almost twenty-seven years. And so I can really, I feel like that I'm the expert on what that road looks like, and I can tell you that the loading dock on the south side is going to cause problems. Um, the development team has said several things during this presentation that I wanted to bring to your attention, and, and actually also in the planning commission. Um, three times during the planning commission, they made reference to the fact that the property was too small to do what they originally planned. Uh, Mr. Skipper, the well-renowned, uh, traffic engineer, said that one of the problems of this area was that it is a multifocal intersection. Um, there's an alley that comes behind Alabama Outdoors and Stock and Trade, and it comes in at a further angle, it will, then all the trucks coming and going and in addition to all of the traffic. I believe that there is a traffic safety concern there. They've said that the north side of the dock won't work, but when I spoke with Heather Carter with Jefferson County regarding the sewer line, she told me that no one had even presented a specific plan for her to approve or disapprove. So I know that they've thought about it. I know that they don't like the north side of loading dock, but I also know that they haven't really tried as hard as they can to try to make it work. Um, the landowner has expressed concern for his tenants at Cameron's Corners. That's where the UPS store is and there's a, um, do-it-yourself crafts. Those are his tenants, and these trucks, in our proposal, would be at the back of their building. What they are proposing for you all to approve today is on the front of my building, um, building next door that Cindy is, occupies, and then another building that an architect, an architecture firm has been in for over forty years. And so I completely understand their concerns because those trucks will be at the back of their building and they don't like it. Why ask them to consider what it would be like if they were on the front of their building? Um, they also expressed tonight a concern about people coming through Hunter's Cleaners through the little drive-through and having to make a ninety-degree turn, which I bring to your attention, that we all do at literally every stop sign we come to on every street if you need to turn left. It's not, it's not in, something that's insurmountable. The thing that I'm asking you is that the Piggly Wiggly is the sole benefactor of these trucks and the deliveries. It is their business that is going to benefit from them. And what I'm asking you all to consider is that they be asked to bear the consequences of these trucks. It may not be as convenient for them to have everything encapsulated into their property, but I do really think that that's the best for the neighborhood, and I do think that's the best for our community. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'm Cynthia Taylor, I'm a, I'm a...
Yeah, I'm Cynthia Taylor, I'm a massage therapist for twenty-seven plus years. And twenty-two of those years I've been leasing from Dr. Witt. And I love the Frisiglio family, so I'm a little torn, except the fact that my business relies on tranquility and quietness, safety. And I already deal with the trucks coming, I can't remember that little alley. But I get, my door gets knocked on all the time because I can't make that turn. So, my concern for me and the other six people that are massage therapists in that building is just the noise and the traffic and the security. But thank you for hearing me out, appreciate that.
All right. Thank you very much. Hi.
I'm Jennifer Nunley and here for nineteen hundred, nineteen oh two, and nineteen oh four Courtney Drive. Those are the apartments that back right up to the new location where they plan to build the pig. And, um, appreciate the opportunity to speak. And wanted to let you all know we support the pig and the redevelopment of the pig. It's been there probably about as long as these apartments have. These apartments were built in nineteen fifty-six and they've been used as apartments all that time. Our concern about the development though is about the loading dock, the same as Ellen and Slade mentioned before. Safety has been an issue that's raised by my residents. Their concern for the safety of their children, the privacy their children will have with all the increased traffic right there. They won't be able to comfortably let them play in the yard. But the biggest concern is the noise. And I do want to share a quick story with you. Before the last Planning Commission meeting, uh, we had a resident who called us just days before to see if he could expedite his move-in. And his reason for wanting to move in is because his current apartment backed up to a loading dock in another part of town. And that's when I really woke up to the real problem that is about to happen in our backyard. Because I, up until that point, had believed that all measures had been taken to minimize the risk of noise and inconvenience to the residents at Courtney Drive. But this was an example of somebody who was living it and he couldn't take it any longer. So, while I support the development and I recognize that it's not convenient to move the loading dock to the North Side, as Mr. Legg put it, it just creates too much of a problem for us. I ask you as city council members to consider the problem that having a loading dock just thirty feet away from your bedroom window would cause for the residents of these apartments, the people who are already there and living in the neighborhood. When you consider it, I just ask that you just consider the respect for those people, the people who are already here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, with that, uh, we'll go ahead and, let's just, anyone, we, we may, we'll still do questions. And I know Mr. Blackwell's got a question, y'all got a question. I, I think we're, we've ended the line, so let me go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Harden, you want to ask your question, Mr. Blackwell first?
I'm trying to understand if, if, if they put it on the North End, where are you, where are you accessing the trucks from? What street off of Ox, I assume off of Oxmoor? And where are you saying they're going to come in through Drake or Cook?
So, they would come in, they would come in from the same spot regardless with their site plan or our proposed site plan, which is right next to the UPS store in the side of the pig. So, regardless, if our site plan or their site plan, you'd come in the same direction. And so, my, my, our theory is protect, protect the children, protect safety, don't back over sidewalks, don't back over public crosswalks, come into the middle of the development and back straight in. Instead of coming all the way on Courtney, pulling up and blocking access off two eighty, blocking Courtney Road, blocking that cut-through road, you block four different roads with a, a backing end of a, of a tractor trailer. And I know the council knows this, but you know how big these trucks we're talking about are? They're nine feet tall, that's as tall as the ceiling. From beginning where, where, uh, the president is all the way to the gentleman sitting right under that column, that's how long these trucks are. They're seventy-eight feet. And so, you're going to have all those trucks pulling up there and backing up, uh, into the, um, loading zone.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any questions from council? If anybody else, Mr. Sims?
Uh, yes. I had a question about, uh, the deliveries as currently planned. So, we talked about this some last week in committee about just the volume of deliveries. But I noticed when I listened to the Planning Commission case, there was also, the motion included a reference to the timing of deliveries. So, I was just curious as to what is the current timeframe that deliveries are planned? Because I think it, the motion included, uh, that all deliveries would be concluded by seven thirty. And subsequently, I also had a question about that, is if you have trucks backing in here, you know, what type of sound is made when trucks, these trucks back in? You know, do they have a beeper that's going to be going off at five thirty? Can you just talk some more about the deliveries and the plan to control that from a noise and a, um, you know, timeframe standpoint?
From a timeframe, our, our, we, we take deliveries right now from five AM to twelve noon. Now, in other municipalities, we take a break on eighteen-wheelers. We've made agreements with, between seven fifteen and eight thirty during school time. And then we stop the eighteen-wheelers at ten thirty. I'm not sure about the seven o'clock unless that's just something from a school standpoint. But we'd be happy to meet with whomever or talk with whomever to work out wherever that case may be. But our delivery hours are from five AM to twelve noon. But we, again, during the school hours, we would stop eighteen-wheelers from coming in for that forty-five-minute period, whatever that case may be. As far as the noise, I mean, I think some have the beeper, I don't know. Um, other than that, we're going to have a barrier. Architectors not, architects not here, but hopefully have a barrier behind our loading dock, which sort of sets, goes down. And I, I wish I could speak more on the noise, but I can't. I'm sure there's some kind of beep, yes.
Well, I mean, and, and I know once they're in the loading dock, you know, as you referenced, it'll be somewhat contained in that area. But it will be backing up on the street, you know, starting at five AM. And that's why I wanted to ask, because as you referenced, there are residents there who are probably still asleep.
Right. If we, if we get trucks early to convenience others, then that's, you're right.
All right. Ms. Smith, did you have?
I just, I had a, two questions and I think you answered one of them, because you said it again. So, the loading dock is actually on a grade, so when the truck backs, it's going down. Okay. And then also, I know y'all, this is probably still in process, but I assume there's going to be some landscaping around the, the buildings that will provide some level of...
And also around the, you know, the wall that's going to, you know, that's going to separate the loading dock from, from view. There's going to be trees and plants.
Okay. So, there will be landscaping along that, that barrier wall, but also at the back of the, at the back of the property, between the property and, okay. All right. Thank you.
Could I just say one more thing real quick?
Yeah, yeah.
If I could? You know, let me see, Dr. Witt kind of talked about us going in meeting with, uh, Heather Carter. We did show her our plan. Uh, you know, she said we didn't show one, we did show her our plan. And our plan, which was what you see up here, taking that loading dock to the North Side would not work. I can bring Jess up, our engineer. We have, we have looked through every scenario that we could possibly look through to try to do something on the North Side. But after exhausting search, we're trying to find something that works for, for Andy and also would not be, you know, that's what I'm looking for, real disruptive for, for the folks at Cameron's Corners because they have trucks coming back there too. So, you know, so that's the other issue. It's just going to get very congested.
Yeah. Ms. Smith, do you have another question?
And, and I, we haven't, I know we talked about briefly, Dr. Witt mentioned Jefferson County. There is a sewer easement, correct, on that North Side? And what is, what is that, what is the rule about the sewer easement? You're not allowed to put a structure on top of that? I don't, I'm sorry.
Jess can speak to it.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Hello. I'm Jess Circa, Mo's Shul Engineering, uh, civil engineer, uh, one zero zero one, Twenty-Second Street, South. I have this email from Heather Carter specifically about what they do allow, because, you know, we looked at this. When we were going to move the dock or look at moving it to the North Side, we knew we couldn't move it as we have it designed on our plans, which is a structure with the wall, because they will not allow buildings. And so, we wanted to talk about going to a, like, hydraulic lift and seeing if that would be allowed. And what she provided, um, basically the, it's a twenty-foot easement, um, centerline is the sewer main, ten feet either side. And they must be maintained free of any encroachment that would affect our ability to construct, inspect, maintain, repair, and/or replace our sewer mains. In no case are permanent structures allowed, including concrete lamps, landscape, or retaining walls, substantial landscaping, concrete structures, or deep paving, buildings, ancillary structures, or anything that must be permanently affixed to the ground slash foundations for stability, which these would have to be fixed in the ground. Equipment that requires specialized equipment to move, which with, this isn't something that you can just push out of the way. They would have to come in with equipment to remove the lift. And then also, uh, or anything that must be disconnected from permanent power sources, which obviously this lift would have connection to permanent power. So, from that, um, explanation was kind of where we got our understanding cleared up that even if we went to the temporary lift, they, because the, the whole thing is that if there was ever an emergency and they needed to come repair something, that they can get to it, access maintenance, um, and that wouldn't allow that.
Also assume that they don't really want anything that could possibly do damage to the sewer main as well? They don't want anybody doing something that might cause damage to it? Okay. All right.
All right. Anybody else? Mr. Wolverton?
I just had a very quick question about, um, I, I know you referenced last week during committee, kind of the ingressygress point of, of backing in. What, what is the topography of the sidewalk there? Is it flush? Are we going to be jumping over a curb to get into position?
Sidewalk's up against the C V S.
Yeah. So, that, so the sidewalk, it depends on which sidewalk you're talking.
Yeah.
It's up against, if it's the, the existing sidewalk is at the C V S, I believe that is curb.
I, I guess I just remember a similar kind of construction easement that was provided to Trinity a few years back, where they knew that they were going to be driving over the sidewalk, damaging the sidewalk, and they proffered to repair it. It seems like, uh, yeah. It, it seems like there's potential for some of that here as well with, with kind of the constant movement of trucks.
Thank you for doing that.
You, you all mentioned, y'all were building a sidewalk.
I'm sorry.
You are building a sidewalk, aren't you?
Yes, yes, we're going to build...
But I'm assuming it's in the city right away.
The way that we have done our tests, it doesn't affect the sidewalk at all. And, and we have enough, you know, turn readies to make that turn.
Without, without impacting the sidewalk? Yeah.
Right.
If anybody damages the sidewalk, they got to fix it.
I would imagine the apron would be part of the sidewalk right there. So, it would be high-strenged concrete like the rest of it.
Yeah. So, so, yeah.
Andy just reminded me of something which I had forgotten, but on the South Side of our building, the sidewalk is flush to the ground. It's not, it's not raised.
All right.
The curbs.
All right. Any other questions?
I, I have some comments.
No, they have an obligation to do that regardless. Ms. Gear?
Yes, I just have a few comments after watching the Planning Commission or the planning, yeah, Planning Commission meeting. Just comments mainly. I, I, I find it, um, I don't think that having a, uh, you know, people out there, a traffic controller for every truck that comes up from here till the end of time is a sustainable situation. Trucks come and go, they get delayed along the way. I just, I don't think we'll, I mean, I think that'll be a hard situation to manage. I think that the residents and the businesses in this area, they've been here, they're established. And I do think this will be a major impact on, on their environments. Uh, we, we have a large property here that we're trying to fit, um, a, a new pig into an extremely tight back corner. And when I watched the, the meeting, the Planning Commission meeting, I, I heard it said time and time again about the tight spot. There weren't many design options as a result of that. And so, you know, in my mind, we're just trying to do too much with the little spot in the back corner of this larger area. And, um, I think those are my comments about the plan. Thank you.
Well, if I could address one thing, um, we wouldn't have this issue if we could have, you know, had C V S moved to the corner. We have talked to them and talked to them and talked to them and asked them over and over again. And the owner of, of the building has even agreed to try to build them a new building if they went to the corner. They have refused. And so, yes, it is, it is a tighter site than we would like. But I think what has been designed fits on there really well. And, um, and again, we're going to make every, every opportunity we can to, to create less problems. And the one, the one good thing about the trucks coming on Courtney that I need to say and get on record, the store that exists now is about fourteen thousand five hundred square feet. This was going to be twenty-six thousand feet. So, Andy right now doesn't have any storage space inside his store, because it's all floor space pretty much. So, that's why he has to have multiple trucks coming down. And, you know, has so many deliveries, he can't store anything. In this store, he can store a lot of stuff, so the truck, truck load will be reduced. You won't have as many trucks.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? If not, then Mr. Kendrick, will you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir. It's in order to approve the pound development plan required by the Nebraska Shopping District, section two. The fair is a planning commission, city government, and any recommended approval of the pound development plan required by the city, county district. Now, therefore, the old name by the city council is followed with pound development plan for Paul and Scott, Paulson and property. Not given now, however, uh, three thousand eight, Drake Street, thirty thirty Independence Drive and nine twenty six Courtney Drive. Be approved, the pound development test exhibit B, section two, the company after the act of this order can improve by the way of the company law, the pound development plan test, the exhibit A, should be developed uses and restricts applicable to the property described in section one, the exhibit A, previously zoned to the neighborhood. So, the district, district restrictions offered by the applicant as far as shall control the uses of the property. The owned property shall provide a designated, a designated personnel to assist on schedule and operation delivery trucks of grocery store as a means to ensure efficient flow of traffic and minimal disruption to on-site parking. City personnel to be also available to assist in the safe access of students traveling through and from the adjacent school. Section three, number six, in time and place of the property. Section four, the second one, is provided by the city, section five, any points of any orders to fight the union. Pass two, to look at that according to the restrictions, all the parts of the unit is not affected, they are natural and many of those. Four portion effect, section six, the only can come effective, we will consult that by the city council. Please allow the mayor's otherwise.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. We, we lost Mr. Wolverton for a second. There he is. Okay. All right. We've had the first reading. Now entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved. Second.
Motion for Ms. Andrus, second for Ms. Smith, and a roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Council Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Gear?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. So, that is ten to zero, and now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Smith, second for Mr. Waltney, and another roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Council Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Gear?
No.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
No.
Andrus?
No.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. That wasn't keeping count. Six to four. So, that is approved, six to four, and will be ordinance twenty-eight eighty-one. All right. Next item, ten ten twenty-three, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to rezone thirteen hundred Columbiana Road from I one to C one. Applicant is Eric Rogers, Progressive, Progressive Properties. And the owner is Second Presbyterian Church to permit the construction of a twenty thousand one hundred twenty-five-square-foot single-story medical office building. This comes to us from the Planning Commission. This comes to us from the planning commission with a vote of four to five unfavorable recommendation. And we will start with a report from planning and development. I believe this one's coming from Mr. Gualdy.
Yes, I am going to have to accuse myself in this case due to an issue with my husband's law firm, so I'm going to hand this over to Councilor Gualdy, and thank you again for covering for me last week and for handling tonight.
All right. Mr. Gualdy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Andrus, the committee met last week, and after hearing from Melinda Sellers, Bob Easly, and Beverly Seeley, the committee voted four to zero to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Councilor Sims and second by Councilor Wolverton.
All right. Thank you very much. So, with that, I will go ahead and open this public hearing. I see Melinda Sellers up at the podium. If you will start us off with your proposal.
Thank you. Melinda Sellers, Burn Foreman, 420 North 20th Street, Suite 3400, Birmingham, Alabama. I'm representing the potential purchaser that has this property under contract. That is Progressive Properties for the 1300 Columbiana property. We are seeking to rezone from I-2 to C-1. And I think, Brian, if you'll put up the zoning map, this is the green I-2 that is adjacent to a C-1, and very close to a C-2. The intent of C-1 is to provide for professional office use compatible with residential and commercial. So, I think that C-1 is obviously the highest and best use for this piece of property. If you look at the surrounding properties, this property, as you know, currently has a church and a daycare on it. And as I understand it, y'all may correct me if I'm wrong, but it's been off the tax roll for the city for quite some time. And so, the request tonight would put it on the payroll, so to speak, for the city. I understand, based on looking out there, that there's tremendous maybe support and opposition. We are aware of opposition. I would like to say, however, that I'm unaware of any opposition within 500, from a property owner or resident within 500 feet of the property. And I'd be happy to answer questions, but before that, I'd like to turn it over to the property owner to speak on this request as well. And this is Mary Clyde Teague.
Hi, I'm Mary Clyde Teague. I am a member of Second Presbyterian Church for the last 36 years. I was elected the treasurer of our church in January of this past year. Our church has been there a long time, but we have declined. We have nine members, and we are trying to maintain a facility that has no heating and air in the sanctuary. Our sound system is gone. Our lighting is poor. We have no, the choir does not shine. There's no lighting on the cross. We don't have funds for that. So, it has been, I don't know if y'all know much about Presbyterians, but we try and do everything decently and in order. And through our session and our meeting with our Presbyterian folks, we have decided that the best use of our funds and our stuff is to sell our property and move to use that on to other missions. And we plan to merge with Edgewood Presbyterian Church, another Homewood church. I have met with Beverly Seeley of ABC Daycare Child Development Center, who we appreciate their support and their being with us all those years. But as far back as September of 2022, I met with her to tell her of our dilemma, a financial dilemma, and offered at that time to tell her that we were going to sell the property and she was going to need to move, and we would hope to use some of the proceeds from the sale of our property to help her in moving her equipment, her daycare, outdoor equipment, whatever. We would like to use some of our funds to help that happen. We got an offer in March of this past year from Eric Rogers with Progressive Properties to purchase. We, being a small church with not many members, and certainly not the expertise for property and real estate, asked or hired Keith Arundel with LAH to help us. He looked, we had two commercial use people that were interested, and the church that meets there in the afternoon, gave us a letter of intent, which was way below the highest bid. So, our session met, we reviewed all the options, and we went with the highest bidder, because we felt like we could sell the property and use it to go on to do mission work within the local community, within the state, within the world. And that was what we chose to do. We met January, no, June the 14th of this year, and with the Presbyterian, and told them of our desire, and they approved that. And with that, we informed the daycare and the afternoon church, Grace Church, of our intent to sell the property and that they would need to move. We had our last service on October 3rd, World Communion Sunday, for our congregation. And then on October the 12th, we sent letters to the daycare and to the church that they would need to find another place to worship and have a daycare after the 1st of this year. Like I say, we appreciate everything they have helped us do. They've helped us stay solvent as long as we could, but we are in debt, and we need to sell the property. And so, that is the situation. We are fully behind the option for Eric Rogers with Progressive Properties to rezone and develop that land. Thank you.
All right.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sure.
May, I'm not sure anyone else can. The daycare center, does the daycare center and the church, do they have two separate leases with y'all? I assume since the daycare center was there prior to Grace Church.
Yes, we have, we had a three-year lease with the daycare when they first came. It was renewed for another, and since then, it's been a month to month. And when Grace came, they were a small church that were meeting in homes, and they wanted to, they wanted a worship experience in a sanctuary.
Sure.
So, they asked to rent our space, which we were happy to do. And, but we've just been on month-to-month lease with him also.
Okay, okay. So, the lease with the daycare center existed prior to the church meeting in y'all's sanctuary?
Yes.
And did you say that the sanctuary doesn't have heating and air?
The heat, no. There's no heating and air.
Okay. But two separate leases. Okay, thank you. That's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. I am assuming that there are some other people that want to come up and speak to this item. If you do, I would ask that you just start lining up up here. Yeah. Whoever. Yeah. Ms. Saltzer, if we could put the sign-in sheet over there, it may speed some things up.
I thought we had one over there. I don't know what happened to it.
Um.
Do you need extras over there?
All right. So, a couple of things before we get started with this. We obviously have a number of people looking at the line that want to speak, and we've still got a good bit of the agenda to go after this. So, we are going to limit the time of the speakers to three minutes. We've just got to get through everything tonight. Secondly, I know that I've seen a number of emails, and I know we talked a little bit about this last week at committee. The issue that's before the council is a limited one. It is, it deals with the zoning. It deals with the use of the property. It does not deal with who the tenant of the property is, regardless of what the decision is tonight. That is not something that's part of our consideration. And just to illustrate that point, regardless of how this decision is decided, whenever it's decided, that doesn't speak to who the tenant is. The city doesn't speak to who a tenant should be or shouldn't be. The city just speaks to the zoning and whether or not the requested zoning is appropriate. And so, I would ask that you limit your comments to that, to the use and the zoning, rather than speaking to who should be or should not be a tenant. For example, the current owner can decide, regardless of this, whether or not they want to have a particular tenant. A new owner could do the same thing. That's not really within the city's purview. So, but we want to hear your comments. We want to hear what you have to say about the zoning and the use issue. So, please feel free to come up and speak to that, but please try to stay on point with that, if you will. So, come on up. And again, there's a sign-in sheet right here that someone can go ahead and be signing in to come up next after the speaker, if you want to. Sorry. The sign-in sheet's up here where Ms. Saltzer is, and Mr. Seacrest right here at the corner. They've already, yeah, you guys that are lined up, if y'all can come on up and start signing in. All right. Sorry. Didn't mean to slow you down.
Good evening. I'm Beverly Seeley. I am the owner of ABC Child Development Center located 1300 Columbiana Road. We opened the center in 1996 with one child, and within six months, we had 85 children. There was truly a need then and is now for quality, affordable daycare in Homewood. And I'm here tonight to respectfully ask that while considering the rezoning of this property from institutional to commercial, you consider the impact this property would have on the families whose children are currently enrolled, and those who have registered for future enrollment at the daycare. We are currently confirmed with a full infant department through September of 2024. Nearly half our children live in Homewood, and about 35% of our parents work in Homewood. And of course, many of us shop in Homewood. We are very proud of our demographics. We have parents who are attorneys, who are hairdressers, housekeepers, dispatchers, dentists, and everything in between. Since sharing the news with our parents, the resulting possibility in closing the center in December, many of our parents have been frantically looking for affordable, quality care. Unfortunately, most daycares in the area are full capacity. And those centers that have been found to have availability, the tuition is 73% higher than what we charge. I had one parent tell me that she's found a spot for her son, that she doesn't have to take on an extra shift at the hospital to pay her son's tuition, because she'll be going from $185 a week to $320. ABC is one of four licensed daycares in the city of Homewood with four church-accepted daycare centers. We offer affordable daycare for children ages six weeks to five years, and we are only one of two centers that offer childcare central subsidy for lower-income parents. Now, losing the center will severely impact all the parents, but especially for those who depend on the subsidy to help pay for their daycare while they work. My staff who's here tonight, many of whom are single parents, will be losing their jobs in December. However, they've continued to stand by our small business during this time, and I cannot thank them enough. I firmly believe that it's imperative that this property remains owned institutional so an affordable, quality childcare facility can continue to serve the residents of Homewood and the surrounding communities for years to come. I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. And that was about the best timing of three minutes we've ever seen. You hit it right on the nose. Let me just make one more comment. And certainly, we appreciate your comments, and certainly appreciate the daycare and the work that you do. Again, for future speakers, whether or not the daycare stays there is not part of this issue. This could be denied, and the daycare could still have to go away. That's going to be up to the, to the property owner.
I understand that 100%.
And I know you do. But we can't consider whether the tenancy of the property. We can only, legally, we have to consider the use, and we can only base our decision upon use according to the law. So, please try to speak to use as opposed to who the tenant is or the value that a tenant brings. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alex, can I ask something real quickly?
Sure.
Because I'm a little bit confused. So, institutional zoning is for churches, it's for institutions? It's not for for-profit businesses?
Correct.
So, is the daycare center a for-profit venture?
It is a for-profit venture, and we would need to look into that question to see if institutional would even be the correct zoning for a for-profit daycare center. I don't think we know the answer to that tonight.
Okay.
But I think we would need to potentially look into that. By the same token, that would also, C-1 might be an appropriate zoning for that daycare center, as opposed to, it might even be a more appropriate zoning than institutional for a for-profit daycare center.
Okay, right now, we're looking at zoning for this.
But, yeah.
I did ask about zoning. C-1 does not allow for daycare.
Okay. So, we, so, yeah, but for tonight, the issue, who the tenant is, not an issue, either way. No, that's okay. All right.
Chavik Stargner, 234 Crest Drive. President Wyatt, I'd just suggest to you that, humbly, that this use is about the zoning. You know, I-2 allows for the church, and only a church could harbor this low-cost daycare. I guarantee you, if it's set up as a for-profit, it's not making profit, because it's an act of love and grace. I've talked to Beverly, and she's told me about her daycare, and it's amazing what they do for our community.
I don't think anyone's denying that. And I'm not, let me just be clear, and I'll stop your time, so that you get your full time. But let me just be clear. I'm not trying to say anything about the daycare. What I'm trying to do is what the law requires us to do, which is what we can, considering what we can't. Who the tenant is, we cannot consider.
I understand.
So, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, but please go ahead.
These people. So, I-2, it's zoned, that's the status quo. So, I see no reason to change from the status quo. I mean, all the people that are up here are prepared to talk tonight. I mean, it's, you know, it's not going to exist without this I-2 zoning. If you change it, it's going to be a sleep apnea clinic or something like that. So, you know, the church is there, it's a lively church. If there wasn't a church there and there wasn't a daycare, this would be an easy decision. But the four council members in the past made the wise decision to zon this I-2. I mean, I've been in JJ's office, and he's suggested, well, why doesn't your church, y'all know my church, why doesn't your church find a more typical church structure? Well, because they're not around, and this comes up, and you're going to rezone it, and it's going to go away. I would also suggest that, you know, I mean, it's a beautiful building, it serves a needed purpose, and it's there. So, by taking away the I-2 and changing it to C-1 would decimate the structure, which is an environmental concern. I'll know, Andrew, if y'all, your committee wants to talk about the environmental questions. I had a point of information on the packet that was in the planning commission. There was a note on there that said that Homewood was going to give back a easement along the creek. Is that, is that part of this request? Is that?
That's already been done.
Okay. But for this, for this purpose, though?
No, it wasn't for this purpose. It was that that land was no longer needed for what it was originally given for.
So, I mean, you know, again, you're going to change, you're going to do a lot of construction on a property that's already settled in. It's along a creek. Y'all built this beautiful bridge to connect that apartment community. This daycare and this church serve that apartment community, and now you're going to just, you know, tear it down and create a commercial building that backs up, that turns its back and has its dumpster right along Shades Creek. I don't think that's a good idea. So, anyway, just, it's a status quo. If you're going to be deciding solely on zoning, I would just say, leave it, leave it I-2. I mean, it's serving its purpose, and it will in the future. And another thing is...
If you will, just wrap up for us. We just have three. We just have three minutes.
The biggest ministry I see that Second Presbyt has had was these beautiful kids that, that are nurtured every day in their facility. So I would just consider that as their, as their ministry.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Patrick Williamson, seventeen, twenty-three, Mayfair. My son Davis is a student at ABC. Uh, my wife and I have been in Homewood for two years. Um, and we love Homewood. And one of the reasons that we chose it was because of its diversity. Um, and that's also a reason that we chose ABC. Uh, we're here on behalf of ABC and, and we're here on behalf of the Homewood residents that would be affected by the rezoning. Now, if I'm gonna ask each of you to be honest, uh, I feel like I've gotta be honest with you first. Um, if this rezoning goes through and my son is displaced, could my family find alternatives? Sure. Do we have family that could help out? Absolutely. But another truth is that this decision affects a multitude of families that don't have those options. Um, as a representative of this community, uh, and a representative of this daycare, the rezoning and development will have a long-term and costly effect. We were given effectively seventy-two hours notice that ABC would cease to exist at this location. The average daycare waitlist time is nearly a year for a, uh, for an infant, just like my son. We know this because we've contacted every single daycare in the city of Homewood and the surrounding areas. That means anywhere from eight to twelve months after ABC has vacated the property, families are gonna struggle to find comparable childcare. Uh, this institution has been a part of this community for years and has proved that its usage is perfectly viable. Now here's where I'm gonna ask you to be honest. Do you value a C1 medical office over a long-tan, longstanding staple of the community? Do you value another C1 medical office even when there are vacancies in a medical office building a few hundred yards away? Or do you value the service that this church and daycare have provided this community and those communities surrounding it? I believe the best use of this property would, would be for another church to step in and present a viable offer, striking down the rezoning, um, and continuing the property to operate as it is. You know, mission work was mentioned earlier. I think the greatest mission work for the local community is a local church that is pouring into and, and loving on children and the next generation. So I just ask that you take this into consideration, um, as you vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'm gonna try one more time. We, we can't decide who is on this property. And that, and nothing about the zoning decision decides whether or not Second Presbyterian or some other church or daycare or anything else stays on this property. All we can speak to is use. I'm sorry, sir, if you wanna get in line, you're, well, I'm happy to hear your comments. But that's, I wanna give these people a chance to speak, so. That, it's no problem. So a-again, please try to speak to the issue that's before us dealing with zoning rather than who, what entity should be on the property? Okay.
Good evening. Brooke Sandlin, eighteen thirty-six Cedarwood Road. My name's Brooke Sandlin. My wife Kelsey and I have parents to a four-year-old and a two-year-old. ABC Development Center. Ask for your patience as my wife and I welcomed our third child on Wednesday last week. And our hope and plan is to send them as well to ABC Child Development. We love and adore Ms. Beverly and her staff. Been proud to be associated as parents of the center. I'm gonna skip a, a large portion based on your recommendations, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, I do want you to know that we've scoured the city regardless of cost, regardless of availability, we cannot find childcare for our three kids. There's a lot of anxiety amongst a lot of parents here for that reason. And, and while I know that your decision does not directly correlate legally, it's impactful. My family and I, like many others, moved during COVID and found a house with more room just over a mile from the church. We love this area right across from Lake Shore Park. Felt comfortable in investing in a home so nearby. This property is currently zoned institutional and the future use map shows institutional as well. Pulling into church to drop off my kids, as Mr. Williamson stated, I noticed a large sign said for lease in the C1 that was displayed earlier right across the street. I just truly don't think there's a huge need for an additional medical building in this area of Homewood. Thank you for your time. Again, I hope that the developer can build a medical facility in Homewood. I just truly believe that this is not the best place to do it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it and congratulations. Yeah, get some sleep.
My name is Langston Haygood at two eighty-eight Huntington Park Circle. Uh, my comments are a little bit different than what you've just heard. Um, I've lived in Homewood for thirty-five years. When my wife and I decided to move back to Birmingham, we looked at Vestavia and Hoover and Mountain Brook and Homewood. And the name itself says enough about our decision. Um, I have traveled back and forth on Columbiana and on Lake Shore for thirty years working. Uh, I started the Covenant Counseling and Education Center in ninety-five, which became the largest professional Christian counseling center in Birmingham. And, uh, I also served as an adjunct professor at Beeson Divinity School for nineteen years and, uh, have been on staff of Covenant Presbyterian Church. So I'm also a Presbyterian, by the way. So I want to speak, uh, against the, um, transition and the rezoning for several reasons and maybe they're a little bit different than what you've just heard, uh, to conform Mr. President with what your instructions are. Uh, the first reason is that, um, there are practical unintended consequences of any decision that we make. And the unintended consequences of changing the property for what it is into something else, whether it's a medical center or something else, um, that is going to impact a lot of other areas that will unfold in the fullness of time. We do have the, uh, Lake Shore Medical Center close by, the Dock in the Box, uh, St. Vincent's access, um, and then of course, the, uh, service station. So that the, uh, complexity of adding some other facility, commercial facility to, uh, that area is going to be very troublesome. For example, if you are traveling down Lake Shore and you come to the traffic light, um, and then you.
I'm gonna ask you just to start to wrap it up, cause I'm hitting, you're hitting three minutes, but feel free to.
I've always had that.
I do too. I understand.
All right, if you take a left onto Columbiana, if the person does not turn on their, uh, signal, turning signal to pull into the gas station, then you have, you have to fall a far behind or run the risk of not making the light because the light is very fast. So then you can possibly hit someone. So then you have the complication of adding more traffic into that area as well. I think more importantly, and the second reason that I wanted to address, Mr. President, is that, um, that area, including the church, whether it remains a church or whatever use it's for, uh, is somewhat of a landmark in Homewood. I pass it all the time. And so the value of the property being what it is adds to a whole nother dimension of Homewood. It adds to our culture. It adds to our value system in order to maintain what we have that we call Homewood. So, uh, in brief, if we are, um, members of the council, if we are leaving it zoned as it is, you can always come back at some point and revisit this issue. But if we are on the side of removing, uh, the zoning as it is, it's done. You can't go back and redo it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Even if I took more time.
You did fine.
Uh, Council, this is Trent Ralston. Uh, I actually live in Hoover, but I commuted into town, uh, into Birmingham and my wife found, uh, ABC daycare and, you know, we've loved it ever since. Three things I want you guys to keep in mind as a council, you know, more pertaining to the zoning. You know, right now it's, it's, uh, it's a I.
I2.
I2. Instead of switching to C, C1 or C2, which is right there in close proximity, I think there's multiple buildings with the same designation. So, you know, from a zoning perspective, it does fit, but at the same time, you, you know, this same council has poured a good bit of money into a park renovation right there in the Lake Shore with the bridge being over the river. And to have a church there with a park or with a playground would look really good aesthetically as well to the other, uh, homes behind it, the apartments there as well. The, as, as far as the daycare is concerned, I mean, you know, you've said it's not your legal ability to predict the tenant, but you, you guys are in this position that if you voted, uh, if you vote to rezone it, then, you know, all of the ninety families that it will affect, that we will all be displaced for some sort of time. The other two things, uh, to consider are, you know, there's not a lot of I properties left, I2 properties left in Homewood. So, you know, no, maybe they don't, maybe the Presbyterian, Second Presbyterian doesn't sell to one of the other bidders, but leaving it as I2 allows for some other, you know, maybe unknown, uh, bidder to come in and, and make it, you know, better in that same realm. And third is, you know, I, I know that the Second Presbyterian representative said that the money would go to missions and things like that. And I want you guys, the council, to consider that, you know, bailing a church congregation out by rezoning a property that's already set. Think about that and think about the aspect of what that's gonna do to other properties that are I2s or I1s, um, that are gonna come up as well as more developers come into Homewood and try and rezone going forward. So that's all I got.
All right, thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name's Brent Davis. I live in Hoover, but I work in Homewood. I'm on, uh, Lake Shore Drive. I work for Live Development. I am the parent of two children at ABC daycare. Um, so I will try to, uh, keep to the zoning, um, that narrow aspect that we're, uh, being tasked with here. I would argue that I2, the current, um, zoning is the highest and best use. If a medical off, you know, C2 might be an acceptable use in the same spot, um, but not the highest and best use. What, what is there currently is not vacant land, it's not a vacant building. There's a church, church congregation meeting there for the use that it's intended for. There's a daycare there. Uh, it's, it's being used to its highest and best use. And, uh, I think at the beginning of this meeting, uh, Mr. Faulkner, um, was, uh, giving some money and, and it was mentioned that, uh, Homewood, as I think he said, one percent of sales tax goes to schools. And I think that's great, but what about the children that are not school age yet? You know, that are just as important, you know, this, those early, uh, defining years. And, um, we have found that ABC is a, a great, um, admirable, respectable place for them to be. So, um, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Lee Lewis. I do not have a child at ABC daycare. Um, I live at seventeen twenty-five South Lake Shore Drive and property line to property line, best we can tell, we're about six hundred and sixty-seven feet from this property. We've lived there for ten years. I'm a lifelong Homewood resident, um, and have seen the city change and grow over the past forty-plus years. Tonight, I'm here as a neighbor to ask the council to decline the request to change the zoning of thirteen hundred Columbiana Road from I2 to C1. In its current zone status of I2, the property serves eighty-five children within sixty-five families each weekday as a safe, affordable option for childcare at ABC Child Development Center. Allowing the rezoning of this property creates a hardship, not only for those families having to find other childcare options, it also affects the livelihood of the preschool's owner, director, and employees. The hardship doesn't apply just to the preschool. Grace Fellowship Church has held services at this location each week for the past seven years and rezoning will displace an established church community and force them to seek new accommodations for their ministry. Within the city of Homewood, the intent of a property zoned C1 office building district is to provide areas for office and professional buildings compatible with commercial and residential environments. As stated in previous meetings with the planning committee, the prospective buyer and developer proposes a twenty thousand one hundred twenty-five square foot, single-story medical office. The buyer's representative last week stated, um, that all of the plans are quote, "very preliminary" and not even owning the property, they're just very preliminary, so they don't have a solid plan in place. It was also stated that this medical office building is a concept plan and just an idea. A quick internet search yields a minimum of five properties currently available for lease for a medical office within Homewood for a total of thirty-eight thousand four hundred forty-two square feet, well above the proposed twenty thousand square feet of the buyer's concept plan. In two buildings within a few hundred feet of the subject property, there is seven thousand square feet of medical office space available for lease. These being the MedHelp Building and the building next door to it that are just across the creek. In Wildwood, there are two available properties totaling over twenty-five thousand square feet of available medical office space. Additional space is also available in the Highway thirty-one corridor. While the buyer has stated their good faith intentions for this property, without a solid plan in place, an approval of C1 zoning leaves the door wide open for any building or business that falls into that zoning category. And if approved, what prevents the prospective buyer from reselling the property and advertising it as such? It's been a pleasure to watch Homewood grow into what it has become today. I'm in no way against development. However, I'm always in favor of preserving the character of buildings like that of Second Presbyterian Church, um, and the character that they offer our community. While a new office, medical office building may be a great addition to one company's portfolio, preserving a little bit of Homewood is also great for our city's portfolio. As a neighbor, I respectfully ask the council to decline rezoning thirteen hundred Columbiana Road to C1.
Thank you very much. Are you sure? Ms. Lewis? Mr. Wolverton has a question.
Just to be clear, I have not done all the research. It sounds like you've done, but, um, were any of the properties that you looked at, I know you mentioned some in the specific vicinity, but are, are you taking into account anything across town as well, or is that?
That is just one. That is just within Homewood. And there are others in Bosavia upon thirty-one in that area. There's also an entire office building, I think on Beacon Parkway or Golden Crest, but that's considered Birmingham and probably not as desirable. But there are opportunities.
But the thirty-eight thousand you referenced was...
Was within Homewood. Yes.
I got you. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Hi, I'm David Walker. I live at a hundred Hall Avenue in Homewood. As to rezoning tonight, as Lee said before, the developer at the committee meeting asked for rezoning for a rudimentary plan that they have no idea what it's going to look like in the end. She's, the attorney said that at the committee meeting. So, they're asking for a, a complete zoning change for something they don't know what they're doing with yet. And if they decide to change their mind, then we were sold a bill good on possible medical facility. But they're just asking for a zoning change so they can start their ball. So, they can buy it first, then they can start planning for it. In addition, there's, there's a competing offer to the developer that doesn't require a zoning change. So, there's, there's no work to be done there for the city and anyone else involved. It's zoned institution. There's an institution that wants to buy it. Why not keep an institution to institution? If I wanted to sell my house tomorrow, I couldn't switch it to commercial and aim for a Burger King to come buy my place. So, I think the same thing should be thought of in as institution. Shouldn't just be switched commercial to its convenient for the person trying to buy it. You had a good map up here about the zoning. Can we pull that zoning map up with the red and the green and the...
No, Brian, can you put up that zoning that you had earlier that had the colors?
Yeah, hang on.
Yeah, he said hang on.
Okay. There we go. All right. So, if you're starting off at Columbiana, starting off Lake Shore and Columbiana, that's been brought up before, but it's commercial. It's, and it transitions naturally up to Berry Road. Starts off fully commercial, medical gas station, goes to more medical at the twelve eighty building, which is directly across the street from the proposed property that we're talking about tonight. Then it switches to institution, a lightly used during the week, only a couple hours' use on the weekends. And then directly next to institution is multifamily. It's a large apartment complex that's next to the institution. Then next to the multifamily further up Columbiana, it's single family. It's, it transitions well. It acts as kind of a buffer for the residents that are in the apartments and the residents that are in the single-family units past the apartments, that they have a little bit of a space between them and the comings and goings of a full commercial units that are more north on Columbiana. So, with that being said, I hope you'll take that into consideration of just rezoning issues. And it's institution, and it works as an institution. So, let's keep it an institution. Thanks.
Thank you. Let me just mention one thing, just so no one gets confused. The city can't speak to who, who the seller should sell to. And I, and I don't think that's what you were trying to say, but I just want, want to make sure we're all on the same page. All right. Come on up.
Hey, my name is Daniel Johnstone, and I am from Homewood. I went to Hawken, Homewood Middle, Homewood High School. Back in the day when we had to travel down South Lake Shore to get there. I actually live in Hoover, but my children have gone to this daycare. And I am going to speak just about the zoning, I promise. Just giving a quick background so you know why I can speak here and have some skin in the game. My children, they're both sides of their, their grandparents. They live in Homewood, and we are there all the time. And so, just to speak about the zoning, though, I do want to mention that I imagine, although I'm not well-versed on this, is that it would be harder to get zoning like this approved in the future. I understand the big interest in the alienability of properties. Being able to sell to whoever, obviously, to commercial people is, is desirable to potentially have buyers with more money. And, and I do appreciate that concern. But I think that keeping the zoning the way that it is, is also valuable to the actual community because it will be harder to get as, that type of zoning back, I imagine, as, you know, I imagine that the city of Homewood and, and council members prefer zonings where you get more revenue. But as others have mentioned, changing the zoning, it would be hard to get this particular area zoned again, I imagine, and others similar. Whereas, I, back to the zoning map, I'm not, I didn't look at all the zoning for other areas around. But I imagine, and correct me if I'm wrong, but is it not easier to, to change different commercial zoning so that maybe they're not C one, but, you know, where you, you do...
Well, yeah, I, I wouldn't classify any zone, rezoning as easy.
Okay, okay.
And, and rezoning only comes about generally where the landowner requests it. We're, in other words, we're not up here because we're seeking to rezone anything. We're up here to consider an application for rezoning by the owner. And that's usually how it comes up. But I would tell you, almost nothing we do is as hard as rezoning.
Okay. I could definitely see that being true. So, I just wanted to speak about the fact that there are other commercial zones around. And I think that particularly the West Homewood side, I think, does have available options. I'm not going to repeat everything that was said. But I just want to say that, in my opinion and, and others, that the value of having a zone the way it is, such that a church could be there instead of another medical facility, which could go to other places, still within Homewood or very close to it. And I don't know if, if this matters completely with the zoning, but it, the traffic that was, you know, spoken about, everyone that, that knows, you don't want to turn left there. And I don't know if that's going to be an issue with the rezone. Okay, pass my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Joel Busby. I live at ten thirty-two Drexel Drive here in Homewood. And I am the pastor of Grace Fellowship, which is the church that has had the privilege of renting from and sharing facility with Second Presbyterian and ABC daycare for almost seven years. It's been a wonderful relationship for us and one that I believe is rare and special. There's more than one entity and institution sharing the same land in their own unique way for the good of our city. And to this point, Grace has said nothing formal from our leadership. We have not organized opposition as a church. We have not asked our people to speak. We have not asked our people to write letters. But at this point, I thought it would be helpful for us to speak formally. And at the beginning, I just want to make it plain. Grace Fellowship harbors no ill will towards second, toward progressive properties, and our goal is certainly not to make things more difficult for them. I'm also going to make sure to say that I know that Second Presbyterian cares about the community. They've been caring about the community since the early nineteen sixties, since the very founding of our city. So, I want to make sure that they are not misrepresented tonight as uncaring, because I don't think that that's true. We actually have nothing against commercial development or medical offices. As a citizen, I enjoy commercial development and medical offices all week long, just like you all do. Our goal is simply to advocate for the importance of institutions in the fabric of our community, but to importantly make the connection between that value and the way in which zoning provisions give these institutions staying power in our community. Second Pres, ABC, Grace Fellowship, Homewood Cumberland Presbyterian, Edgewood, Dawson, All Saints, Trinity, OLS, Exceptional Foundation, Hawken, Bell Center, and so many more are vital institutions for Homewood. They're special institutions, and they all operate on properties that were carved out for their specific use. And this specific historic church property dating back to Homewood's founding, which is at stake in our conversation for today, sits at a gateway between Homewood and other communities. And according to Homewood's master plan in two thousand and seven, gateway communities are particular places to pay special attention to. Page thirty-six of Homewood's master plan of two thousand and seven says that we need to pay particular attention to where the land use in these areas. And I think with the Greenway being completed, the historic changing of hands of this property, it seems like it could be the right time to update that vision for how we want this place to be used. I two zoning is to provide for those areas that are neither public, nor residential, nor commercial, nor industrial. And it's an acknowledgement that institutional properties could be edged out without zoning provisions. Institutions cannot compete with real, with commercial development. We, we can't compete financially. So, therefore, zoning provisions helps us be able to have staying power in our community. So, so our hope is to take our place in a long line of churches, including Second Presbyterian, to foster connections between residents, to care for the souls and the spiritual needs of people in this community. And it is very difficult to find places to do that kind of work when zoning provisions are set aside. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is David Rice. I live at ten twenty-one Drexel Parkway, not five hundred feet away from this location, but walking distance. We've lived there for about, since the, since January of two thousand and twenty. I have lived in Homewood as a renter. I've lived in Homewood as a college student. I've lived in Homewood as a homeowner. And part of the thing I like about Homewood is despite its density, the amount of, the variety of places and services and buildings and green spaces and community centers and all that kind of stuff that fits within Homewood, within walking distance of my house and other houses of many people who live in this city. And one of the things that I liked about seeing the map of all the zones is how multicolored it is, which I think speaks to an understanding at the time that those zones were decided. There's a variety of needs amongst the citizens of Homewood for all sorts of things, many of which Joel just talked about. And I think all I want to do is sort of speak to, as a citizen, I understand the logic of that. And I understand, when I look at the room full of people, and I understand that we're having a hard time staying on topic about the tenants versus the, the zoning versus the sort of legal versus the personal. But I think the intensity of the feeling, the variety and number of people here speaks to the logic of the variety of zones that Homewood needs is still intact. And I would urge a great deal of caution before I went and changed and tried to homogenize that map and make it all one color. Because as a citizen in Homewood, I like to live in a map that zones, the zone map is more like a quilt and less like a single piece of fabric. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Laurel Ware, and I'm a resident of West Homewood. I love our community, and I love living in West Homewood. Not only am I a West Homewood resident, but I'm also employed by Grace Fellowship Church. I'm our ministry coordinator there, and so I oversee a lot of our operations. And because of my work there, I've had the privilege to build relationships with the people of Second Presbyterian as well as the daycare. I come tonight not to argue whether what tenant should be there, but just, to speak on behalf of why these zoning restrictions are in place. I believe that institutions of worship are vital for our, is a vital part of our community. And I believe that it would promote growth and flourishing. Because of my work that I do and my relationships within our community, I've seen firsthand the way that this institution of worship is a benefit to our community. And so, whether we get to stay there or not, I just ask tonight that you would hear these concerns. And I just believe that keeping it as it is would be for the best of Homewood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Rice. I live a mile from the property in the Drexel neighborhood. And I have nothing new to add. I would just like to add my voice as, in opposition to the rezoning. I see value in the property as it is, as an I two. And I appreciate driving past it each day. I appreciate worshiping there every Sunday. And just want to echo the concerns that have been said. And I like it the way it is and appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
My name is Bill Stribling. I am a volunteer trustee for the Presbyterian of Shepherds and helps lead the regional organization for Second Presbyterian Church. I speak in favor of the motion. We've heard a lot about thi, this church and these people tonight. These nine intrepid souls have been keeping a building which has no heat, no air conditioning. It's going to be falling down eventually. They have ceased to become a church. They are no longer a church. In the Presbyterian Church, they can, they have for some period of time the ability to do something with their property. If they do not, at that point, it becomes, in our constitution, property of the Presbyterian. And the Presbyterian, nor the church, will be able to maintain this building as a church. It will not be a church. It has ceased to exist. I can appreciate the ABC daycare as well as Grace Church. What a great job they're doing. How many kids have there been out here tonight? We hadn't heard a word from many of them, really. It's been, they must be doing a fantastic job. But unfortunately, they, obviously, under the current zoning, cannot maintain that building there. So, Presbyterian speaks in favor of the motion, and if it's denied or approved, it will, again, there will be no church there, and it will be back with another, somebody else who wants to zone it. Grace is perfectly have, will, able to make a counteroffer for that building if they would like to maintain it as a church. And I would point out, there's an economic benefit for the city of Homewood. It will now become an income-producing property. And these nine souls will take this purchase price to another Homewood church where they will be worshiping, and there will be benevolences in the Homewood community, in the state, and in the world at large. It will be for the, the best use of that property. I appreciate your time.
Alex, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Because I'm not Presbyterian.
Yes.
What is that, you said that there is a, a period of time where they are allowed to sell the property and, and keep those profits, but then after that time is passed, it reverts to, and I think the Methodist do that the same way, too. So, it reverts back to the Presbyterian. What is that period of time?
As long as they are functioning, a, a, a church, functioning as a church, with the approval of the Presbyterian, they can sell their property.
Okay.
If they cease to become a church, and that will take further action of the Presbyterian, that action has not been taken yet, but it would be very soon.
So, if, if, so that is something that the Presbyterian would do. They would say, obviously, with nine people, you're no longer a functioning congregation. And then that would revert that property back to...
Well, we're a little bit more democratic. They get to make their own decisions as to whether or not they want to function as a church.
Sure, sure. It's not a dictatatorship. I get it. I get it. Okay. Thank you. That's, I just had that question about the process. Thank you.
Just, just to clarify, i, if, if the zoning, I know you said one way or the other.
Right.
It will cease to become a church.
That's right.
But you said something about being open to a counteroffer if one was presented at some point.
Well, there's, there's an offer on the table to purchase this property, and the church chose to accept that offer. If there were another offer, if someone wanted to keep it as a church, and there seems to be a fair support for that, they could certainly make an offer. And, and I think it would be, I can't say it'd be considered now because it, but the, the building has not closed. There is no...
Sure.
Firm contract. There's a purchase offer on the building.
Okay. I, I'm just trying to understand where we stand in, in the process. And I know that you, you mentioned, you know, it, it will cease to exist as a church, but also it, it doesn't sound like that.
Well, let me, let me...
To Barry's point, that may not be within your purview at that point.
Let me interrupt real quick. I, what, what's on the, what's on the property within the zoning is up to the owner of the property.
That's right.
So, so I don't think it, I don't, I don't think we can get into speculation.
No. I was just trying to establish what the process was for the Presbyterian church.
Got it.
I'm not trying to say, we, we don't have any right to tell who to sell to.
Correct. And I'm not either. I was just trying to clarify that, that he said he, he doesn't know what would officially become of the church, because at some point, it may not be in their hands.
I would clarify. The church is, the church is closing, and the Presbyterian church supports the zoning change.
Okay. Mr. Simmons, did you have a question?
I was just going to say, real quick, he said something about if there was another church to make an offer, it would be considered. And just to recap what was said already, there were three offers. Two of them were, I think, contingent upon rezoning, and one was contingent upon financing, and that was the one from the church. That's, that's at least my recount from the planning commission meeting. So, I just want to clarify that there was an offer from a church.
And, and I want to make it clear, from what I've been told, is that that offer was much lower than the offer that is on the table.
That's correct. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's right. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right.
But discontented upon the zoning that is a higher intensity zoning than what it currently is.
We're not selling. We're going to stay.
Well, I, I, I don't want to get into the offer. I mean, whatever, whatever the offers are, that's between the seller and the buyer. It's, stop, stop.
Yeah.
Everybody, stop.
Everybody, stop.
Okay. What, the... What, the, as, an offer is between the seller and the buyer, we are considering zoning. Let's leave it with that, and I'm sorry to delay you. You're up. I, I apologize that that happened while you were there.
No, uh, no. So I guess, uh, yeah. Hi, my name's Chris. I live in Hom- West Homewood, about a block from the Econo Lodge, so.
Chris, can you give us your last name for the record?
Chris Du- Du Barry. So I, I do like rezoning efforts when they help the people that live there. I'm mostly going to rehash points that others have just made. Sorry, but I'm here. Of course, the per- current property owners want the most money for their asset, and of course, the developer of a medical office rental building could pay more than a church for my own Homewood house. I'm sure a dialysis clinic could pay more than another family, but I can't change the zoning for the highest bidder, just because I know, no longer personally need it for that. It sounds like the, a church wants to buy the church and use the church as a church, and the daycare can be there, but that's not in the, in my comments. Several old trees and some playgrounds and a historic building can be right there and remain next to the new Creek Trail expansion, instead of like mostly parking lot. Understand that progress marches on, and one day, the church just won't be there, but I don't think this is the way to do it. If the highest bidder gets to rezone, when demand exists in the current zoning, we could just replace this whole process with an algorithm that rewards commercial zoning if the price is right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Shira Ravinwitch Miller, and I live at three thirty-three Huntington Park Drive. My property actually butts up to Shades Creek. That's my backyard. So I am a little concerned about more commercial properties being built and what that's going to do to my property down the line. Yes, I do have children at ABC. This is one of the main reasons why we moved here. So I actually moved from Vestavia to Homewood, because my property backed up to some commercial. So what do we do? We move. And now you guys are bringing it in. So, I mean, we might move again. I just want to reiterate that I moved here from Vestavia, and that is, um, sorry, I'm writing.
Take your time.
I'm, I'm very concerned about commercial versus what's already there. It's a lovely piece of property. I am not Christian, so I don't have a say, a dog in that fight. However, it is very lovely. I would love to see it stay that way and just remain a beautiful Homewood icon, really. Everybody knows where that little church is. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joe Ganow. I live at seventeen twenty-one Kensington Road in Ward Four, and I'm also the pastor at Edgewood Presbyterian Church at eight fifty Oxmoor Road. I'm simply rising to, to speak in favor of this rezoning and to say very clearly that for these folks from Second Presbyterian, who we've gotten to know over the summer, this was all started before Edgewood got involved, but as we've gotten involved with the friends from Second, we've learned what passionate hearts they have. This is a church that was founded in the eighteen eighties in Birmingham, downtown in Birmingham, and then moved to Homewood in the sixties. It is very hard when something ends. That is hard in any part of life, and it is a hard thing in ministry when something ends. None of these folks wanted to be here doing this today. They wanted their church to flourish. They wanted ABC and Second to be there forever and ever. That is not the reality of, you know, the situation now. And so they have very faithfully, with a lot of tears and prayers, had to figure out what to do with what they've been given with, and how to be good stewards of their building and their property and their resources. And this is what they have prayerfully decided is the path forward. There has been no joy for this congregation in doing any of this. They are deeply grieved to have this go the way it's going, but this is the best path forward that they see, and they're simply asking for your help in giving them a new life as they merge with a new congregation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Brian Krogsgaard. I live at fourteen eleven Arslay Place. I have been in front of you before for my own developments, and I am highly sympathetic to the developer. I'd like to speak, however, to both intent and viability for this project. Intent is in regards to the rezoning, and I two institutional district, permitted uses or armory, auditorium, city hall, community center, municipal jail, religious institution, schools, primary and secondary, with no regard to my understanding, at least, to whether that is for-profit or nonprofit. And Council President Wyatt, to your point about this not being about the tenants, that's absolutely true. However, it is a point to note that it is a functioning structure for these allowed and permitted uses of this zoning today that is in service. Whether or not these institutional uses are future institutional uses is irrelevant, but it is functional and functioning in that use. Additionally, the number of plots in Homewood that can actually be this form of use are limited. There's even a notation in that same thing requiring it to be three or more acres, which this property is. In regards to viability, I'm just going to talk a little bit more of my own experience and note the level of speculation that can exist in a project like this, which is, I don't know if y'all have heard, but it's really expensive to build right now, and it's really expensive to finance things. And there is no real certainty to say that a new and altered use is the one that will even occur should this pass. And the gentleman that spoke to, you can always do this later, I think, had a lot, a great deal of wisdom in that something can shake out in its current form, and the market can decide, is there an existing institutional buyer available? And should one show up, then that may be a very good alternative to the proposal, which has a contingency on the existing offer. The offer can work at a certain level because of that contingency. And the original preparer of remarks noted the higher price in their justification for taking that offer. I'd just like to identify that that higher price is because of that contingency. Without that contingency, there may be alternative solutions. I was just, wanted to highlight those things, and I wish everyone involved the best of luck. I hope that we don't forget the potential impact, however, for community vibrancy and uses for the stated purposes of I two. Thank you.
Okay. Just, you, it's fine. I was just going to say, again, just to make sure we're all on the same page. The city cannot base this decision upon who would eventually be able to buy the property. The purchase of property is between a buyer and a seller. The city just deals with zoning. So regardless of what the decision is, this cannot be about who should or should not buy the property.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Carolina Atkins, and I live at twenty forty-one Chardonnay Way, which is right up the street from this church and right off the edge of that map that you've been, you've seen displayed. I've lived there for a decade while I attended law school at Sanford, to when I brought home my three children. My twin one-year-olds attend ABC, and I'm not sure if any of you have tried to find daycare lately in Homewood, but it's nearly impossible. Try finding two spots at one time, and that is absolutely impossible. That aside, I work from home full-time, and I walk my family down Lake Shore Trail, where my two-year-old son is learning to ride his bike, and my husband runs that path frequently. This area does not need another commercial property in that location. As others have shared on prior matters, there are traffic and safety concerns all around Homewood. It is absolutely a desirable place to live, work, and play, and shop, as Ms. Beverly said. However, just the other day, as I was dropping my twins off at daycare, I witnessed a catastrophic car, catastrophic car wreck right at that intersection. The policeman I spoke to, because I was a witness, reiterated to me how dangerous that intersection is at South Lake Shore and Old Columbiana Road. And I'm not sure if you guys have considered this yet, but is there a plan in place for if that property were to get rezoned, for how the intersection and the increase of traffic throughout the day would cause? What precedent are we setting here to start selling off churches to put in commercial properties? Please take into consideration that there is not a need for another commercial property in that location. And again, my family personally will absolutely be impacted, regardless of the daycare, but the rezoning, because I live up the street, I love Homewood, and I would like to continue safely walking my children up and down Lake Shore Trail and the future Greenway. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. May I begin by expressing my gratitude for the council's willingness to engage these citizens on the issue of the zoning. I appreciate your patience.
My name is James Martin. I live in nineteen sixteen Shades Cliff Terrace Apartment C, and I stand before you tonight to emphasize the critical role of institutional zoning in our city. The heart of any thriving community lies in its ability to strike a delicate balance between growth and preservation, progress and tradition. Effective institutional zoning serves as the backbone of this balance, ensuring the orderly development and sustainable growth of our city. By carefully delineating and allocating specific areas for various institutions, we not only create a well-organized urban landscape, but also foster an environment conducive to growth. Institutional zoning is not merely about delineating physical boundaries. It's about fostering an environment where residents can thrive, businesses can flourish, and essential services can be effectively accessed. I'm a transplant to Homewood. I grew up in a small town in East Georgia, the kind of town where I have been known and known others for many generations. It's a daunting task to move from a rural area like my home to an urban landscape like Homewood. Institutional zoning is about providing people like me a place to belong. I found in thirteen hundred Columbiana Road, and more specifically Grace Fellowship Church, a very place to belong. I'm asking you today to preserve the zoning so that institutions like churches can continue to provide people like me a home in Homewood. Let us remember that institutional zoning does not stifle innovation or impede the city's growth. Instead, it accommodates institutions that preserve the unique character and identity of the many diverse neighborhoods of Homewood. As stewards of our city's future, it is our collective responsibility to prioritize well-planned institutional zoning, not merely as a bureaucratic formality, but as a means to foster a vibrant, safe, and sustainable environment for generations to come. Let us stand firm in the value of community spaces. Let us be bold in proclaiming the worth of institutional space, and let us be, and let us work together to create a city where every institution plays a crucial role in shaping a brighter and more prosperous future for all. Thank you.
Hello.
Mr. Cobb?
Can I, may I ask you, use the, that graph up there to change it before I speak, before I use my time?
Wait, I'm sorry. I just didn't understand what you were asking.
Yeah, the, um, were you zoning the plots and all?
Oh, the zoning map. Yeah, Brian, can you put up the, there you go.
I don't want to be famous, but, um, I just want to get that up there before I start my time.
No problem.
Okay. Let me know when I, okay.
You're, we're ready when you are.
Just so you know, I tried to get up here. I appreciate the live feed. It is, it's crucial, because I didn't realize you guys were doing this until I actually saw it. But when I came up here, the doors were locked downstairs, and the elevators wasn't able to come upstairs.
Yeah, and I, I, as soon as I saw your text, I got with, uh, Bo, went down and took care of it, and we, there's a whole elevator thing, but yes, we got it.
I just want to state it for the record. It might be more packed in here, but.
I don't think so. There's no stairs, and there's no money out there.
I appreciate you all voting for that. But my question to the members of this organization is, is this part of the master plan or development?
Let me interrupt you real quick, just because you haven't said your name. I know who you are, but you haven't said your name for the record, so.
Well, I'm nervous. It's intimidating getting up here.
That's okay. Go ahead. You're doing fine.
It's intimidating, no matter what. I'm Jason Cobb, and I live at sixteen twenty Sunset Drive, Homewood, Alabama, three five two one six.
Perfect. Thank you.
Right down the street. So this is intimidating. Okay. So I was going to ask, is this like a part of the master plan or a development, community plan for it, to do this type of development? If it is, or if it's, if it was discussed earlier with the council or the mayor, maybe I might be out of turn in speaking, because if it is part of a development plan or something that I didn't know about.
No, there's not.
I'm speaking out of turn.
A development plan has not been submitted. This is simply about zoning.
Okay. Well, then, then let me jump in. I'm here because at the time, it was a four to five decision unfavorable to, for the county, or, excuse me, to the commission, sorry, to the city council members, I apologize. However, one of those votes now is abstaining from the decision, which is why it wasn't I high-tailed it down here, to make my voice heard. I don't know if it'll make a difference or not, but once I heard you were not voting, I immediately come down to make sure I can give it over to everybody. I think everybody's received an email or something I've sent earlier. But, um, you know, the contract based on contingency for zoning approval, I, I know that's not part of it, but I just, I'm just trying to tell you, I'm a, I'm in decision to vote no. I hope you vote no on this proposal. And I understand the best use, the guy is way, way more eloquent than I am, but the best use of space on the valuation of an appraisal for taxes, I understand that. From a commercial side, I get that. And this is not going to get, and this is going to bring tax revenue, but rezoning it for this is the lowest consideration for the immediate community in this specific situation. I'm not against rezoning of anything, but this specific case, it's not for the best for the community or for the city. I respect the owner's ability or the property to understand and desire to make a profit, the nine members of the church. However, the rezoning has been this way for a very long time, and as the man so eloquently said, three, three rows before me, had a, a great argument that I didn't have down. I'm all for tax revenue, and I understand the importance of economic development for our taxes. I'm all for it. As a matter of fact, our wonderful mayor and council members themselves voted earlier as an awesome job, by the way, as a windfall for savings for the city and the community for the Amway's decision. I'm all for that saving money and the windfall for our budget. Congrats. But however, the ingress egress, which I know Counselor Greer had a, had a question on as far as the community and how that works, if you see it on there, it's a very specific area, and then when you, I wish I could, may I?
Sure.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm, I'm right here, and when you come out, there's already a lot of traffic coming towards Lake Shore to get on to go to either Sanford, or wherever they're going, or UAD, or whatever it is. And there's already people coming out here, all going down here. And I don't, you know, again, I know the development is there, and I'm sure they have a wonderful plan, but at the same time, that's a problem. South Lake Shore and then Sunset, for those residential voting communities, it's hard for them to access that. At eight o'clock, five o'clock traffic, and then you also have soccer time and, you know, all that over. So it's a problem. So I say that, that the ingress egress is in fact a problem for the community on the residential voters. And so the, the zoning has been this way for a long time, and it should be continued. You know, if you had another institutional rezoning issue, maybe down in Rosedale or some other place, it.
You're okay. You can finish up.
Okay. But.
Just briefly.
Briefly. So consider the Wildwood complex, as we know. It just went to the Scott Dawson Evangelistic Association instead of a medical use office space. And the rezon, let me finish. The rezoning to commercial for pure profit, and the adverse result for the community is not in our best interest. And it does not escape me, the fact that the members are voting here, and rezoning are not in their areas. However, I'm saying as far as the community, for the city, as well as Homewood, this is not the best use for our community to go into commercial. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ethan Smith, and I am not currently a Homewood resident, but I follow the Homewood politics as much as I can. When I first moved into Birmingham, I lived in Hickory Knoll Apartments, just a little ways up the road from this property. Grace Fellowship did not, was not using that property at the time, but that church Um, but that church and that location was a huge part of how I fell in love with Homewood. I moved from Minneapolis, Minnesota, uh, to come to Stanford University um, and just fell in love with the community of Homewood, um, specifically. Um, unfortunately, I had to leave due to issues related to this and that I could not afford a home in Homewood. So I moved just up the road off of Alford Avenue, again, very, very close, a three-minute drive to this property. Um, and so it's very near and dear to my heart and, uh, my history in this city over the last eight years. Um, and you may say I don't have a northern accent, and that's because I feel like I'm becoming at home in the south here. Um, and so I just want to, um, clarify a few facts related to this property. I'm also on the Board of Elders of Grace Fellowship, uh, which means I am involved in these decision-making processes. Uh, and I just wanted to clarify that we, we did make an offer, uh, actually in February of twenty twenty-three, which seems to be before the March offer that, uh, Eric Rogers brought. Um, and we did offer that for the appraised value of the property. Um, that offer was kind of kicked around and not, we didn't really receive an answer for quite a while. Um, and then these issues have been inspired that have brought us here tonight. Um, so they'll leave that to the history books. Um, I also just want to add, um, and you just hear my trembling voice and my weak knees because I'm not used to speaking in these kind of, uh, settings. And also, uh, I just have a deep love for this property and for, uh, Second Presbyterian Church, who has been there for so many years. Uh, again, I loved this building before I had any attachment to it. Uh, I would walk past it, I'd drive past it and love it. Uh, I have spent, um, Monday nights at nine P M. vacuuming up water with the now-retired pastor of Second Presbyterian Church, um, because I was there on our church business and the bathrooms were flooding and he needed help. Um, we, um, much has been made of the disrepair of this building. And I just want to say that we have done all that we found wise and reasonable to keep up the maintenance of this building. Um, as the air conditioning has gone out, uh, we provided air conditioning through, you may have seen, the commercial rental units have been outside. Um, I spent dozens of hours installing that, running that to keep this, uh, facility cool um, because we believe that it is worth, uh, its place in this community. Um, and we wanted Second Presbyterian as they had their last worship service ever to be able to enjoy that, um, not in ninety-degree heat, which is unsafe and unhealth, unhealthy for their members and for us. We have pregnant women, children, all that. Um, and so just want to say, we, we love that piece of land and that property, and we want to steward it for the good of Homewood, um, going forward, um, and we stand ready to do that.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone. Thank you for your patience tonight. Um, I wanted to come and just let my voice be heard as well. My name is Caleb Houston. I'm a Homewood resident at five zero five Devon Drive in Hollywood. And, um, I am here to just speak about the power of institutions. I haven't researched everything as well as some of the people who have presented here thus far, but I do know that institutions matter. Um, I've taught courses on this at Mississippi State University, and I believe that, um, we do need different types of businesses and institutions in a community for it to function to its fullest potential. And so with this property, um, I, with the map has been shown several times. The only institutional property, uh, that's close by is Second Presbyterian Church. And I believe that it's a beautiful historic building, and I just would like to see that preserved. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. You've been very patient. I remember your hand.
Yes, sir. How are y'all doing?
I'm glad you, I'm glad you made it up here.
Yeah, I do apologize for raising my hand out of turn.
No, you don't, you don't need to apologize at all. It's okay.
So, my name's Josh Botterford. I do have children there. Uh, with respect to what is being voted upon, uh, I understand your, your legal responsibility, and it's not a favorability-type situation. Um, I live right up the road. I am a Hoover resident, but I'm on Holly Road. So I'm literally one house over from Vestavia and probably twelve steps from Homewood. Uh, it's not the council's fault by any stretch of the imagination that we're here. And I understand, uh, the legality behind owning a property and having the right to do that property as you see fit. Uh, I travel that road every single day, even when I don't take my children. I'm a local business owner, thankfully. Uh, it's a huge blessing. And the unique thing about Homewood is you really do have these wonderful pockets and neighborhoods. And if you were to rezone that effectively, I understand you've said the whole time it's not up to the council who's able to take it. It is one hundred percent up to the zoning who could take it going forward. Um, with respect to not an individual, but just the classification.
The use, correct.
So that's what my question was actually in reference to. Um, I can tell you effectively, as being people who are not originally from the area, we're from southeast Alabama, my wife and I and our kids. Uh, my wife would lose her job because we don't have supplemental childcare in the interim. We were given about a forty-five-day-ish notice. That's not perfect. I'm, I'm sure my wife keeps track of dates, as most of you probably understand. Um, what I would simply do is caution you in reference to it, uh, with respect, um, for what it does to the impact of the community. Homewood is absolutely beautiful. And in my humble opinion, we don't need another commercial space in that location. As several people who have articulated it so incredibly well, there is tons of unused space uh, that needs to be filled. That's how they, you know, become dilapidated from not being in use. That is a wonderfully beautiful building. I do understand there's maintenance issues and complexities behind that. I probably don't understand. But it sounds, as someone who thrives within that community, because everything we do is in Homewood effectively, it's, um, there is a community that wants to use it for that same zoning to come in and uplift it back to its former glory. And it sounds to me, just sounds that way, that it would still inevitably be profitable. Um, and with regard to the just historical nature of that area, taking it in, in, I'm sorry to say it this way, but sterilizing it to another commercial space, that's just not what the city of Homewood is about, in my opinion, at least, from what I've seen over twelve years of living in the area. Um, the impact on ninety-some-odd families who all conduct ourselves within the city limits, whether we live here or not, I can't even put into words, uh, what it does to us. And I'm sure you've all been through similar type situations, um, so I, I don't pretend that you haven't. Uh, I do thank you all for being up here so late. I think the, uh, outpour from the local community should speak volumes in this scenario. And, and I understand the, the desire to make it something else for the person who wants to buy it. You know, with respect to them, they're just trying to purchase property. So I just ask you that you consider all of us who are local and who took the time to also come up here and be with you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I know that you are ready to, for this to be done. And of course, I was given an earful of things to say when I got up here, but, um, I'm T J Holmes. I am the youngest member of Second Presbyterian, probably by forty years. Um, I am one of three current serving session members, so I am classified as property owner also. Um, the, I just want the city to know this is not something that we went into lightly. Um, finding a home in Homewood is something that I found. I've visited three churches, uh, before I was, uh, able to be myself and be welcome at Second Presbyterian Church and also gave me some of the nerve that I have to be able to speak in front of this room today. The church itself, we keep talking about it being a landmark, and I think this is something that needs to be brought up to the city council. The round glass window that is above our sanctuary currently, um, I think the last estimate I received was in the upper, like thirty to forty thousand dollars to repair that one window. It is currently has about a, a foot, a foot and a half vacant space of rotted wood currently. Um, we have two thresholds that have to be replaced. The portico that goes along our front door is also rotting. Could another church come in? Yes. And repair all of those things and make it beautiful again for the city of Homewood? Absolutely. But the absorbent amount of cost that it would do to do those repairs and get the church up to current city codes and standards is a lot. Um, the daycare we've mentioned earlier has been kind of grandfathered in. Uh, a new ownership would then have to go through the processes. It would have to be rezoned in order for it to become a daycare. Those are all the things that we had going through our head as we were trying to find a buyer. Uh, so that's why we beg and plead for your consideration in, uh, rezoning this so that, um, we can continue our mission. As we've said, Second Pres has been in, uh, Birmingham and Homewood area for a long time, since the eighteen hundreds. Um, the rezoning of this will allow, um, hundreds, if not thousands, of parents, women, children that are displaced through First Light is one of our main missions where the proceeds are going. We keep talking about profitability. This money is not going into my pockets or any of the other, uh, eight members that we currently have at Second Pres. Uh, they are already being noted for fire shelters and things of that nature, so there is no profit. So it's not just, uh, us selling to the highest bidder. It's where our second, uh, memory will continue longer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah. Mr. Holmes.
Uh, Mr. Holmes, your treasurer earlier said that she made ABC daycare aware of what you were doing in September.
Of twenty-two.
Twenty-two, and I keep hearing that the parents have only been given.
Yes, and I have in my notes here that once she was made aware of this, she asked that we not put a for sale sign, so we honored that so that parents would not get upset.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Good evening. My name's Ashley George, and my husband, Thomas, and I live at four zero six Edgeland Place in Homewood. And we've been Homewood residents for the past nine years. I promise I'll keep it brief. I think I'm the last one in line. We love this city for its connectedness, uh, general sense of kindness and neighborly support, for its diversity, committed citizens, businesses, and schools. We also really love its historical nature, and we think that there's more to that than just pretty buildings and beautiful sidewalks. But there is character in its history, and it's something that it's important to us to preserve. I'll keep my comments, um, brief, mainly centered on the importance, the importance of institutional entities. And I believe that Second Presbyterian and its property should remain dedicated to worship in this community. Churches are central to the identity of a community. And keeping this building and its property as a site of worship will serve its citizens in ways that a commercial entity simply cannot. So that's not to say that a commercial entity would not serve its citizens, but there are ways that, um, an institutional entity can serve its citizens that is really unique. I'd also not in, in any way, um, getting into ownership or who's selling or buying. That's not my point at all. It is certainly within the rights of Second Presbyterian and/or the Presbyterian at large to accept whatever offer they so chose. Um, and, uh, full disclosure, as a member of Grace Fellowship myself, we graciously accept, accept their prerogative here. Um, but I just wanted to be sure it is clear, as I think that it already has been, um, as I made clear to the Planning Commission and now to the City Council, that it's not the case that there were not other options. Um, but again, I think that has already, um, been made clear. Um, and I would just urge the council tonight to affirm what the Planning Commission has already voted on and recommended. And I just wanted to reiterate that as the last point, that this was, you know, already something that has been deliberated, and I would encourage the council to affirm that recommendation. Um, thank you so much for allowing your citizens the opportunity to speak. There's so much that we love about this city, and we're grateful for the chance to be heard on this you, this issue and others.
Thank you very much. All right, so I think we've hit the end of, uh, the line here. So let me go ahead and close the public hearing. I see Ms. Sellers walking up to the podium.
Yes, sir. Counselor Wright, there's, um, a lot. We've heard a lot. And I, I have pages of things that I've heard tonight. Um, I would ask that we continue this matter to give us time to consider all that we've heard and see if there are, I, I don't know right off the top of my head if there are ways to address some of the things that we've heard, but I certainly have taken in a lot. And I thank you all for your patience and your time because I do know what we just all sat through is extremely important. Um, and it's important to my clients and to me too. I know it is to y'all. Um, so I would just ask for a continuance of this matter to.
Okay, well, I think, I think it's probably a good idea to allow you that time to consider this and see if that changes anything. Um, so, uh, we will carry this item over without objection to our next meeting on the twenty-seventh. Thank you. Sorry, hey, let me explain it. Fair question. So what that means is the public hearing is done. Um, the applicant has listened to everything that y'all have had to say and wants to see if they can address some of it, or all of it or none of it. I, that's up to them. Um, but they want some time to do that, and I think it's probably worthwhile to see if they can address any of this, uh, to see if there, it can be any agreement on it. We will carry the item, we won't vote on the item tonight. We will carry it over to our next meeting on the twenty-seventh, uh, where we will take up the issue and hear back from the applicant as to whether or not there are any, any changes in what they're, they're requesting. All right. So that would be something you would need to address with the owners of the property. Uh, we, we can't address that. Uh, the owners of the property can address what's happening with the daycare. That's not something that's before us.
But you can choose to vote.
Can we place a motion to vote now?
No, they, no, they do, there's no motion from, from the crowd. Doesn't, so I think that, I think that the best, I think that the best, look, the public hearing is over. We're going to let the applicant talk to y'all and see what they can, if anything, can be resolved. And I think it's, I think it's worthwhile to do that.
May I come to the podium?
No, no, let me speak. We're gonna, we're gonna carry the item over. If there are issues about what's going to happen with the property in the meantime, you are welcome to talk to the owner about that. They, they, they can answer that question for you. We do not have the ability to speak to that. So that's why we're, we're going to carry the item over to the, our next meeting, which is on the November twenty-seventh.
That is, that is not a public hearing, sir, is that?
That is not a, anyone's welcome to be here. There's just not a session where the, with the podium. So you're, you're more than welcome to attend on the twenty-seventh. Any, anyone can attend on the twenty-seventh. All right, next item. Eleven ten twenty-three, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to approve an amended development plan at two oh two State Farm Parkway. The applicant owner is Homewood Property Outparcels Owner LLC to permit the proposed construction of a new three thousand seven hundred twenty-six square foot, single-story urgent care medical clinic, fast-paced urgent care, as well as associated parking, landscaping, and other site improvements. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of nine to zero favorable recommendation. And we'll start with a report from Planning and Development. Ms. Andrus.
The committee voted four to zero to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Walton and seconded by Counselor Elms.
All right, so with that, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. I see someone at the podium. If you will, just give us your name and tell us what you're here to talk about.
Hello, I'm Logan Gandy with Forty dot Four Engineering. Um, uh, we are out of Mount Olive, and I'm here representing the owner. Uh, the owner has a representative here as well, or two, should I say. Uh, we're just asking to, uh, approve the amended development plan uh, for the proposed, um, fast-paced urgent care. And we're able to answer any questions that you may have uh, from a civil design standpoint or from a functionality of the, the business standpoint.
Brian, could you put the pictures, sorry. Brian, could you put the pictures up? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Let me, let me hold you up just a second here. If y'all, thank you, chief. We're just having trouble hearing. Okay, now you can go ahead. All right.
All right. So we're just wanting to amend basically the PMUD for the construction of a fast-paced urgent care, and we can answer any engineering questions or any development questions from the owners as well.
Mr. Smith, let me ask you a quick question.
Gandy, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm asking the engineer behind you.
I'm sorry.
There... Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Smith.
It's okay. Is this the item that was before us on the sign variance already, or is this a different one?
This is a different one.
Okay, just making sure.
Dennis' office was the sign variance. Okay.
And this is which side of Wildwood is this looking? I'm sorry.
It's in front of the Planet Fitness.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Got it.
So Mallo's is that building on the left, the outparcel on the left, and this is...
Got it. Okay, now we're oriented. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Just trying to figure out what we were talking about. Okay.
There's been a lot going on tonight.
There has. There has. All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item?
I don't know.
All right, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I've got one.
Mr. Harden.
Clearly, you're using up, I'll say, at least 5,000 feet of parking area. How does that affect the parking ratios of the remaining retail there?
So we are providing parking in abundance for our facility. The required parking for our facility is, I believe, 15, and we're going back with 27 parking spaces. So yes, some will be used for the building and other appearances, but in overall, there are no issues that we see.
With the rest of the retail center?
That's correct.
Because you have certainly taken up parking from them.
That's correct, and Autumn or Anna may have additional to add to that as well.
Yeah, exactly.
My name is Autumn Francis. I work for Hutton Development. My address is 736 Cherry Street, Chattanooga, Tennessee, 37402. Currently, this lot is already platted separately from the retail development, so it will not impact their parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, do you have a comment on that?
I have a... I think I can answer your question, too. So when the Wildwood Development Plan was developed many years ago, this was an outparcel. And so the four per thousand parking spaces included this section to develop.
Okay.
It just got...
Okay.
It was originally contemplated. It's just that it's just now getting to it.
Back in Alex Baker days.
All right.
So I have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Gere.
So what is the amendment exactly from the original plan?
So the amendment, the Wildwood, current Wildwood Development Plant does not allow for medical use, even though there's multiple medical uses around, and I doctors a block away. We are asking to amend to allow medical use on this Wildwood.
Mr. Smith, you want to answer that one, too?
I've just been bored sitting there for two hours. Move around a little bit. So any development that happens at Wildwood requires a development plan. So there is a development plan that exists, and if you want to build a new building, you have to amend that development plan to show it. So that's what this is.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Not? Mr. Kendrick, will you give us a first reading?
Yes, ma'am. It's an ordinance to amend the development plan for the Wildwood Center North redevelopment plan for the property described in Section 1. The Planning Commission has favorably recommended amendment of the development plan for the Wildwood Center North redevelopment plan, whereas the Planning Commission recommends that the amended development plan attached to Exhibit B be approved to amend the Wildwood Center North redevelopment plan, now therefore be ordained by the City Council as follows. Development plan previously adopted by the PMUD zoning for the following described property described in Exhibit A located at 202 State Farm and... Be and the same as hereby amended pursuant to the amended development plan attached to Exhibit B, Section 2, from and after the enactment of this ordinance. The development plan, the amended development plan attached to Exhibit B shall control the uses and restrictions of the property. November 6 is the time and place for the public hearing. The City Clerk has given notice of the public hearing as required by law, that no, if any part of provision, the ordinance declared to be unconstitutional, all other parts not affected thereby shall remain in full force and effect, and the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the City Council.
All right. Thank you. If no one else has any other questions or comments, I entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved. Second.
Motion from Ms. Smith, second from Ms. Nelms, and a roll call vote, please. Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Gere?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President White?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, that was my fault.
Ten to... That's ten to zero, and we ordnance 2882. All right, next item, 121023, public hearing set for November 27, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to approve a final development plan at 501 Scott Street. Brought to us by Eric Hindon of Hindon Huckstein Architects PC, and the owner is Michael Kilbore. This is centered around the interior and exterior renovation of the existing Homewood Animal Hospital that would be expanded in size to 3,511 square feet to accommodate a combination of office examination and treatment services, as well as expanded parking, landscaping, and other site improvements. Comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of nine to zero favorable recommendation. We will carry that item over for November 27 at 6:00 p.m., which brings us to the Committee of Referral Agenda. I entertain a motion and a second for approval of the Committee of Referral Agenda.
So moved.
All right, motion from by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Waltney. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? As approved, ten to zero, which brings us to other new business, 071123, request to set a public hearing for permission to vacate Drake Street and adjacent alley rights away for Piggly Wiggly Development. Brought to us by McConnell, White, and Terry Realty and Cale Smith. We will set that public hearing for December 11 at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 081123, request to authorize the mayor to sign facilities use agreement for movie production company brought to us by Chief Ross.
Boy, you picked a bad night.
I mean...
Sometimes the luck runs out, doesn't it? I was gonna say good evening, but it's kind of like good night now, so hopefully this will be an easy one compared to what you've been through. So this is a facilities use agreement, very similar, I think. Mr. Kendrick would probably agree that very similar to what we entered into earlier this year to make another film in Homewood. This is a company out of California, NWM Enterprises, that wants to have an agreement with us to shoot some of their motion picture at our new building at 310 West Valley Avenue. So we have submitted a contract for Mr. Kendrick's review, and I believe he's reviewed it, and we're just requesting that the mayor sign the contract so we can enter into this facilities use agreement. The fee will go to the city. I think it's $1,500 that they will pay us, basically renting our facilities for a few days while they shoot. I think the scheduled shooting begins near the end of this month, so...
Okay. And... Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sims.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Wolverton. And just for clarification, the shooting deadline was the reason for not... It's not going to commit.
That's... Yes, sir. That's correct.
All right.
Matthew McConaughey will not be in this movie, by the way, but some other big stars.
Most importantly. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chief Hill, how much was it?
$1,500. $1,500 is what they're paying us to use a portion of our building for a couple of days.
Okay. Per day?
No, ma'am. I believe it's 1,500. I think it's 1,500 total, if I remember correctly.
All right, and I think that's gonna be Resolution 23167, but the last resolution was so far back.
I think that's right.
Making sure that's right.
You...
166 is 070323.
Yeah, 166.
All right, you're right. Thank you for double checking.
166.
167.
Okay. All right, so that'll be 23167. Last item, 091123, thank you, chief. Request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of October 24, 2023 through November 6, 2023. Brought to us by Robert Burkett and Melody Salter. Mr. Harden still?
Yes, I had a chance to go through all of the vouchers and got my questions answered by Mr. Burkett, so I make a motion to approve the vouchers for a period of October 24 through November 6.
I would second that.
So we have a motion for Mr. Harden, and a second for Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, second for Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved, ten to zero, and we're Resolution 23168. All right, which brings us to the end of the agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Very brief, I promise. Simply just wanted to say a few things. One, Holiday Open House was a hit. I had so many compliments, not only from the local businesses downtown, but a lot of patrons that went, and said it was a fantastic time. It was beautiful down there. I'm glad to see everybody's already getting into the holiday spirit. I had a meeting with Amwaste today. I look forward to giving you guys an update along with Amwaste representatives on Monday at the Finance Committee meeting. I think you guys will hear a lot of the things that I heard today, and it's good. So just wanted to let you guys know that. And then, as I mentioned, or as was mentioned in the credit card discussion that we had last week, I'll be bringing some options for an electronic expense system to the city that I think will be very, very beneficial, something that we haven't had before, that I know several people have used in the past in their own businesses or companies that they've worked for. So I think it will be something that is very beneficial for the city. So just bringing you some options, but that's it. I know we're trying to go fast.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Waltney?
I usually have nothing. I don't have... I will raffle off the slot for public safety to maybe further down, since we don't have public safety to set, so Barry, you know, taking donations. I'm not gonna set public safety, but I did want to make a comment, and I wanted to give some kudos to Counselor Smith for all of your hard work that you put forth on the credit card policy.
Yes.
You know, I think that unfortunately, people in our community, some folks in our community took the commentary and the effort, your hard work, out of context, and they, I think, also took that as an opportunity to badger the city via the... Our local news outlets, which I'm extremely disappointed in how they handled themselves. But ultimately, I wanted to say thank you to you for recognizing that there was a problem and doing what was needed to fix it, no matter what people said about you or the council. So kudos to you for your hard work, and thank you for looking out for the city at every turn, no matter what.
Well said.
That's it. That's all of my comments.
I do not have any additional comments tonight.
All right, Mr. Wolverton?
There's a few public works items, two or three that I saw.
Yep.
So we'll set public works after finance. And then I just wanted to thank Chief Ross and the entire Police and Fire Department for a number of things that happened today. I don't know... Actually, I don't know if anybody else... I'm assuming several people know about some of this stuff, but there was an active shooter in part of the residential neighborhood in West Homewood. Our kids' elementary school was on lockdown for a couple hours. SWAT team moved in swiftly, and fortunately, nobody... Nobody was hurt. If you read the news article, a pet was killed, but I just want to thank them for their service and obviously for their professionalism in handling the situation swiftly, appropriately, and with a successful outcome. And then, secondly, and obviously the Fire Department was a part of that in transporting the individual to seek some medical assistance that they needed afterwards. And then, secondly, Fire Department was responding to a brush fire behind Trinity West Homewood as I was driving over here to council meeting tonight. So apparently Transformer Blue caught all that nice dry grass on fire and was lighting up the skies behind some houses over there, too. So I just want to reiterate their tremendous effort and service to the city at all times. I'm glad that we were able to reward them and kind of, you know, make those adjustments appropriately to their pay and hopefully continue to have that relationship blossom and keep our good, hardworking people in town. So I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sims?
Thanks. I just wanted to let everybody know that the Beautification Board is handing out their next award tomorrow at 1:00 p.m., and it's gonna be in recognition of the Homewood Police Department and the headquarters, soon to be a movie site also, you may have heard. And also, this past Sunday was the Turkey Trot. Bradley and Justin Henley chaired that. It was a great event, but also thanks to the school and, you know, Police Department for, you know, making that event safe and such a success. Speaking of runs, also this Saturday is the Culture City 5K in Homewood, so definitely check that out. It's a great cause. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. My first comment is to thank you for conducting the meeting in a professional manner. I mean, I've been doing this a long time, and a lot of residents don't completely understand procedure, and you're very patient, and I think you only said it about 15 times about what we're here to do, but thank you for conducting the meeting in that fashion.
Appreciate it.
And as I reflect on my time ending up, you know, pretty soon here, I wanted to share with you and thank the council for your support of me, as I have attended a lot of meetings at the National League of Cities and the Alabama League of Municipalities. So Wednesday, I'm getting the award for Advanced Certified Municipal Official. So thank you. So I'll be getting that Wednesday afternoon. So thank you for all your support as I've gone to some of these meetings and represented you. Well deserved.
Thank you.
Yes.
And finances at five.
And I still get priority. Don't forget.
Now it's just more justified.
Relax. I mean, relax. Total flex.
Ms. Smith?
Special issues will follow public works, and thank you, Andy, for those comments. I have to say, as a person who has a journalism degree, I was a little disappointed in the way the story was handled myself, but like you, I'm just glad we're getting it taken care of. That makes me very happy. I would like to bring everybody's attention to the fact that I believe, and I hope I'm right about this, because I came to the art opening downstairs the other night, two weeks ago, and it was lovely, and I told Beverly and the other members of the Arts Council that were there how much we appreciate the way that brightens up that space. So very thankful for that, but they also told me, I hope I'm right about this, that the first concert of the Homewood Pops, which is the band that Mr. Cooper has put together at Homewood High School of various musicians around town, is at the high school tomorrow night, I want to say 6 o'clock.
It's 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock, okay, 7 o'clock. So, you know, get out and support that organization, because I think they look like they're having a lot of fun, and I think that'll be a really fun event to go to. Park Board is this week, and then Homewood Historic Preservation, which we have a ward for, Opening Board, is next Tuesday night on the 14th, and I think that is all my comments. So that's it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Nelms?
I want to reiterate Barry's work on what she did. I did not even see the article before being bombarded by phone calls about how we were reported in the media, and as a former television journalist, I was too disappointed, but at the same time, I understand in their defense, they can't say something ugly, they don't know how to quite articulate it, and that's kind of sad, especially considering the veteran journalists who did it. That's equally disappointing, because they have a lot more talent than that, and to pick at a city that's being proactive, and as hard as we work during the day and in the evenings, I was disappointed, and that's all I wanted to say. I just really wanted to, you know, thank our Finance Committee, Barry, folks for, you know, bringing, finding these things before they come before us, and it's about being proactive, not reactive, so I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Andrus?
know how to quite articulate it, and that's kinda sad, especially considering the veteran journalists who did it. That's equally disappointing, because they have a lot more talent than that, and to pick at a city that's being proactive, and as hard as we work during the day and in the evenings, I was disappointed, and that's all I wanted to say. I just really wanted to, you know, thank our Finance Committee, Barry, folks who, you know, bringing, finding these things before they come before us, and it's about being proactive, not reactive, so I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Andrus?
I will set P and D to follow special issues, and wanted to congratulate Ward Five's own Daniel Chaplin. Daniel was here a couple of weeks ago when the mayor did the proclamation for the Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Daniel completed the New York City Marathon yesterday. Pretty amazing, and he's, you know what he said? Tokyo is next.
Wow.
So never, you cannot say that man is not ambitious. But also, I want to thank Edgewood for having us. I know several of us went for Grand Pals Day, or My Pals Day, or whatever it's called now, and I get to go to Shays Kehaba on Thursday, so I'm very excited about that, so, okay, we'll see y'all there, and that's all I have.
Mr. Harden?
I, too, want to thank you for tonight and Barry for her work, because I saw that, and I want to make sure everybody knows that Saturday, my team's playing Barry's team